I'd like to say welcome to everyone. I'm Frida Powell, Mayor Pro Tem for the City of Amarillo. And today we have Pastor Larry Miles, who's going to bring the invocation. And before he does that, I would just like to recognize him as a veteran. This is a special week, and this is Veterans Week. So appreciate your service so much, and I'll have you come up and have you recognize others.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I would like to take just a moment before we stand up, and I would like to honor our veterans that are here today. So if you're a veteran, if you've served in any branch of the military, would you please stand and let us honor you? Amen. Thank you all for your service. Let me pray. Because that's what I'm here for. Join us in prayer. Father God, in Jesus' name, we pray today for our city and the leadership of our city. Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that puffs us up and the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those presents, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Prepare us to make every moment count. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. So be it.
Okay. At this time, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Again, Pastor, thank you so much for your service in the United States Army. We really appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we do have a proclamation today, and it is for the WRCA World Championship Ranch Rodeo. And we have with us today, and I'd like to ask these gentlemen to join me up here with my council members, and that is, let's see here. It looks like I've got Lehman Wall, who should be here, and he is the manager. And then I also have Randy Whipple, who is the Board Treasurer. And then is Gary Morton here also? Yes, come right around here, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. All right. Whereas, the annual Working Ranch Cowboys Association World Championship Ranch Rodeo opens for the 26th year on November 11th and continues through November 14th, 2021. And whereas, the critical mission of the Working Ranch Cowboys Association is to support working cowboys and their families across America, utilizing the rich Western heritage of WRCA members, the WRCA seeks to educate the public and bring attention to the cause of the benevolent mission of the Working Ranch Cowboys Foundation, keeping our Western heritage alive and the working cowboy in the saddle. And whereas, the Working Ranch Cowboys Association's World Championship Ranch Rodeo is a celebration of the American cowboy, its heritage, and the contribution the cowboy has made to this country. And whereas, the inaugural Working Ranch Cowboys Association World Championship Ranch Rodeo was in November 1996, attracting over 7,000 guests and crowning the first world championship ranch team, the Nail Ranch. And now, attendance annually surpasses 30,000 guests from across the United States and several foreign countries. And whereas, the most recent economic impact study suggests the Working Ranch Cowboys Association World Championship Ranch Rodeo contributes approximately $6 million in direct spending to the Amarillo economy. And whereas, activities during the four-day event include the World Championship Ranch Rodeo Ranch Horse Shows, Cowboy Entertainers, the world's finest cowboy trade entrapping show showcasing the top 150 Western craftsmen, and Amazing Ranch Expo with dozens of exemplary agricultural industry businesses. Now therefore, we Mayor and City Council members of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of November 9th through November 15th, 2021, as WRCA World Championship Ranch Rodeo Week. And enthusiastically welcome the 26th Annual Working Ranch Cowboys Association World Championship Ranch Rodeo to Amarillo. Extend our best wishes for another exciting and successful year, and encourage Amarillo residents to saddle up and enjoy the show. Given under our hands and seal of office this ninth day of November, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, council members Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Dr. Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. And here to accept the proclamation, I believe, is going to be Mr. Lehman Wall. Is that right? It's good to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Randy, it looks like I get the honors. We always have to arm wrestle on who gets to say thanks to the city. First off, did we introduce everybody with our crew? I think we, so this is Randy Whipple. Randy is our Treasurer of our Board for both the Association and the Foundation. Okay? This is Mr. Craig Haythorn, out of Nebraska. This is Earl Coon. Earl serves as our Association Secretary this year. And then next to him, this gentleman is Gary Morton. Gary serves on the Association Board, but is also our Chairman of our WRCA Foundation Board. So as, how should I appropriately address? Councilwoman Frida Powell? Is that the right way to do it? I would always want to make sure I say, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem had mentioned that we have a purpose for our existence with our WRCA Foundation. What that means is, this event, this isn't putting money in my pocket, or these guys' pockets, or any individual's pockets. We're a nonprofit organization that raises those funds, and those dollars go right back out into the community. They go right back out into the pockets of real people. So, City of Amarillo, over the 25 years, you guys have been responsible for millions and millions of dollars, right now, close to $7 million, that's been given back to working ranch cowboy families across the United States. Those things range from, you know, a person breaks a leg and needs some help staying employed during that stretch of time that they're off the job. Maybe the wife is dealing with an illness herself, or something that's caused that to be a hardship. Maybe a child is dealing with an illness, something that the family's having a hardship on. Those things are what Amarillo has made a difference for. Right? This isn't just some fun event that we put on. Now, I will tell you, it is a very fun event.[558.16][558.16](Laughter). So, if you don't have your tickets, please come and support us. WRCA.org, hate to give a commercial there, but WRCA.org will give you all the information on our schedule, and it'll give you information on where you can buy a ticket, if you don't already have one. So we appreciate you guys. We appreciate the support of our City Council. Cannot tell you the hours and hours of meetings and planning and work that's been done through the City Council to ensure that this event can stay here in Amarillo. And we look forward to that effort to continue to keep us here, as well as other events that use our Amarillo Civic Center. So thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Let's take a picture.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Jennifer Ramirez for our public address.
Thank you for participating in today's City Council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us. We are glad you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address City Council regarding posted agenda items. Every speaker has three minutes to address the council, and at the end of two and a half minutes, a warning beep will sound to alert you that you have 30 seconds left to wrap up your thoughts. We ask that you stay within the three minutes allotted. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to items on the posted agenda. Doing so helps the City Council ensure we are following the Open Meetings Act and are able to have an effective meeting for all. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and whether or not you live in the city limits. Again, thank you for being here today to share your thoughts with the City Council. The first speaker up is James Skank, and I believe that's the only, that's the only speaker today. Yes, sir.
I'm going to try out for a rodeo clown sometime soon. You can see I'm sort of dressed for it. James Skank, there we go. We all know that Prop A failed. And I would like to get down to a confusion part, because we did move up to what you called a voter-approved 44.334 cents, which is about a 6.3% increase. And that's much over the 3.5 cap. And so I'd like to hear some explanation as to how you went to the 44 cents. And then plus, you call it voter-approved, but yet it wasn't. Y'all did that. So, anyway, I'd like to get you to give some feedback on that, to where we could hear you and understand what you're doing. And I know this requires a new budget redo, and I'm sure that's going to be fun. It's not going to require a new budget redo. We're going to still go 424 million on the total budget? You're saying no? It's not going to require a redo on? Okay, I got a thumbs up on that. I would like to know where the ARP money is going to fit in to the budget also. Give them a call and talk about it, because I realize there's some changes that must go on. And one of them today is suggested that you're going to do something with Parks and Rec, and possibly close a park, or two, or whatever that would take. And it confuses me when I look back at the budgets over the last, say, Budget '17, '18, '19, '19, '20. You had seven-plus million dollars in maintenance that you used, expenditures that you used on the parks. I don't know why they're deteriorating. If you have that much that you're allocating for that, where's the money going? May I help with that? And one other idea, we are having some trouble with some parks. Maybe consider talking to some of the large corporations to adopt parks, adopt those fields. Help with having some money on those fields, if you're actually needing that. But see, with a 100 million in reserves and stuff, we should never let this go on, because that's the rainy day, and it was obviously raining when you dropped the parks down to $100,000 of maintenance money. That's tough. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Appreciate that. Mr. City Manager, could you ask a member of your staff to maybe get with Mr. Skank to answer some of his questions that he has in regards to the tax rate, and then also the ARP funds?
Yes, ma'am. And Assistant City Manager Laura Storrs can handle that, unless he's got an appointment with her maybe already?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 1A, that's Review Agenda Items for the Regular Meeting and Attachments. Mr. City Manager?
As there, we have all of our subject matter experts here. Is there any items on the consent agenda, or on the regular agenda, on the non-consent agenda, that you've got any questions on that we can touch base on now, before we get into the meat of the meeting? Mayor Pro Tem, I think we're good to go.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moving on to Agenda Item 1B, which is the Report on the San Jacinto Arts Project. Mr. City Manager?
All right. With us today, we have Melin Huntley. I know, I see also we have Edie. I don't know who, oh wait, no, that's a different item. Melin, you're on.
Thanks. I have a whole crew here, so...
Well, introduce your crew.
Okay.
And I hear you've got some presents, too.
Yes, we have tons of presents, so you don't realize that it's Christmas. But first of all, I want to kind of give an overview. You know, we've been doing these neighborhood arts projects now for several years, and going in and identifying the history of an area, asking artists to create works, selling the works, and a lot of, and the funds then go in to help our neighborhood projects. You guys have been incredibly supportive of us for that, and we are quite grateful. One of the things that we have done with this, has kind of become a tradition, is we didn't want to just create the history, and then it just poof goes away. So every neighborhood has made the decision to give some of these pieces of art to the city to hang in your hallways. And this particular group has just gone above and beyond to help decorate, help capture the history of Amarillo. So I wanted to present this first one. And this is for you guys. This is a watercolor of the San Jacinto Fire Station, which was property of the City of Amarillo. And it's that precious little fire station there on Georgia. This is a watercolor by Lou Baggett, just very fresh, very beautiful. So that's one. But we didn't stop there. So this is one, and we have the artist present today who did this one. This one is called "The King of Vibe," and it's about a gentleman named Jeremiah, who, he's a poet, he's a musician, he performs along Sixth Street. But when we selected this one, it's just kind of as a reminder that when you serve the public, you're serving this diverse group. And this was just a reminder of the diversity of Amarillo, as well as the talent and the people who are striving to achieve what they love greatly. So Adrian, right here is our artist. And she recently moved to Amarillo and has just decided that this is a wonderful place to be. And we just felt like the City of Amarillo needed her, we need her, and we needed her work. Dan?
And then, I'm Katherine Traves, the President of the San Jacinto Neighborhood Association.
Adrian, stay up. Stay up here. We're going to take your picture in a minute.
You did not have permission.
So I also wanted to let you all know that we appreciate your support of our art show, and we've raised nearly $5,000 to go towards some projects in our neighborhood. And we even have more paintings hanging in some of the shops for sale. So if you find yourself on Sixth Street, you might find another piece of art down there that will be for purchase. Mayor Ginger Nelson even painted a piece for us, and we've got a raffle going on at Nomad's on Sixth Street. We'll have that through December 9th, when they have a sip and shop. So we're excited about that. And then I wanted to present a painting to the Planning Department, and that would be with Emily and, is Ann Marie still here? We are presenting a picture, a photograph, that was made by Haley Brooks.
Come on up, girls.
Haley's going to come on up here with her art. One of the things that we included on our neighborhood thing to choose from was not only the buildings of our neighborhood, but we also said we wanted to include the people, the people of San Jacinto. That's why we had the great painting of Jeremiah. And then Haley took this picture of her two, her daughter and her daughter's best friend starting their first day of kindergarten. And we'd like to present this to the Planning Department, to Emily Kohler, Ann Marie, Tori, all the people that help us. And so when your staff is working hard, we want you to say, "We're working for the future of our neighborhood," and we appreciate everything. And then one last piece we wanted to share with you all. This piece of art was painted by a freshman at Tascosa. She wrote in her bio that she grew up, she has lived her, all of her 14 years of life, three blocks from Route 66. And this is kind of a self-portrait of her. And her idea, her name of this, the name of this is called "Flourishing." See, she's got all these ideas flourishing in her mind. And we also thought it was fitting, this is going to be our neighborhood poster that we're going to have for sale, a limited edition, signed and numbered. And we thought, you know, we have the Planning Department and the City of Amarillo helping our neighborhood to flourish. Name of her painting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a great big thank you to you all and all the work that you've been doing, and it's so appreciated to be able to share the history of Amarillo. And at this particular time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Ginger Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And I'm going to ask if we can all take a picture together, because I think this is a worthy moment. We want to be very grateful for these gifts, and we look forward to enjoying them for many, many years, but...
So I guess we go to this. Do you want us on that side of the stand?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to move this for you.
This is what I get for showing up as a board member.
No. No, we're going to, really after squeeze.
We got to get, you got to, okay, get cozy. Am I getting cozy?
Ready, one, two, three. Perfect.
Thanks so much.
Well, y'all work on it for just a second. I'm going to depart from the agenda for just a minute, and Edie, we're going to bump back up to public comment, if that's okay, because I understand that you have a conflict and can't be there for the later item in the agenda, so we're just going to reclassify you as public address, and if you want to come on up to the podium. It's a little tricky to maneuver those, I'm not sure what's on the other side of your poster board, but, okay, wow, so exciting.
You're the one who did the most work on it.
Okay. I didn't know we were doing this today.
Well, and that's okay.
I didn't either until yesterday, so...
I think we're just here to officially announce the award from TechStop for the Bario Streetscape Improvement Grant. The number on the check, they said it was so large, they didn't even know how to write it. They're using the Neighborhood Plan Proposition 1 Bond Funding as the match, and I think it's just a really amazing example of the partnership between the neighborhoods and the city. So I think that's probably what you wanted to share today.
Yes.
Okay. And the other, the other thing I'd like to share is that, and I'm very grateful, we're very grateful to Emily and the Planning Department, because she was the one who discovered this grant for us, and really did a lot of the work for it. We asked for $167,000, I think, was the original one, and I don't know if everybody can see this, but this grant is for $1.79 million. That takes care of what, all the sidewalks and the ADA ramps on, from Garfield to Arthur. Thank you very, very much.
Actually, to Ross.
Yeah, Garfield to Ross, yeah. Sorry.
Well, don't want to shorten it. You want to get it all in there.
No, no, no. Like I said, I found out yesterday I was supposed to do this, and I was like, "Okay, wait a minute."
Well, your check looks nice. You're welcome to come back anytime you want to bring a $1.79 million check. Thanks, Edie. Okay, moving on then to our regular Agenda Item 1C, which is a discussion on Parks and Rec Services and adjustments to include potential future park closures. Mr. City Manager? Just, and actually, I guess before I hand it to you, I'll just say, I requested this Agenda item, because we need to have a discussion as a council on where we go from here with regard to park funding. So we had visited with the community, and we asked the community to support a higher level of revenue for maintaining and doing some work on our parks. And the answer was no. So now I think we need to have a conversation as a council about how we give Parks and Rec direction on what to do with the revenue that they did get appropriated during the budget process, what priorities that we need to make. And I think as a council, we need to have an opportunity to ask questions, and what data do we want to see from Parks and Rec in order to make funding decisions and set priorities, working with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and under the Parks Master Plan? I just think we need a conversation as a council about where we go from here. So that's what this item is. Jared, anything you want to add to that?
No, ma'am, really, it's just...
No, ma'am, really, it's just an opportunity for you all to begin the conversation. And there's no resolution that's gonna come out of this, but we need to start having the conversation in front of everybody where everybody can hear it and provide input and feedback to council on what they think are the preferred directions to go with regard to how we handle our parks inventory. A lot of this came about as a result of the Parks Asset Management Plan that illustrated that we were many millions of dollars short annually on what we would need to spend if we were gonna maintain our current parks inventory, forget expansions. So this really doesn't address things like needed capital projects, like lights and other things that need to happen. But wanted to just give council an opportunity to just start the conversation. And there's no preconceived estimate for how long this conversation needs to take today. We'll just keep bringing it, you know, as appropriate conversation points come up so that we can make sure we have input from council that can guide what we do with regard to our current parks inventory, how we manage it, how we maintain it, how we expand in different areas, if that's even possible. And you'll see an item on the agenda today in consent that is talking about adding or utilizing funds that are in this year's budget to make plans for the future with regard to some of our sports facilities. Doesn't mean that we're gonna do them right away, but it, but it is gonna help us, inform us as to what we need to think about as far as targets financially to be able to do needed future capital projects. So really, it's a, as, in way of introduction, Mayor, I'm not, I'm not gonna steer you in any one direction. It's just an opportunity for council to discuss, where do we go from here?
Okay. So Michael's here, Laura's here. If we have any questions or wanna have them at the podium to do any dialogue, but mainly I just thought surely you all would have questions and where we would begin to steer Michael on what priorities. I mean, we spent so much time during the budget talking about what the needs are, but do you need to hear from Michael again about what some of the needs are, or?
That's what I would, I would like to hear from Michael, kinda what the needs are, what our options are, you know, what direction that we can go so we have a little bit better idea now that we are past the election.
Okay. So, and Michael, I mean, we're, we're not expecting that big conversation today because probably that's something that you wanna go back with your team and put together, but some of the things that you had talked about during budget, can you just kinda highlight what you might say the top five needs are?
Mayor Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. I think this conversation really started back when we started our asset management plan. The city manager mentioned that. But when we completed that asset management plan, what we found out was that we owned $100 million worth of assets. That's park benches, that's pools, that's facilities within the zoo. It's everything that Parks and Recs covers. At that point, we should be spending somewhere between $3.3 and $3.8 million annually just fixing current assets that we have. That's not adding new assets, just, just where we are as a department. At that time, when we initially finished the asset management plan, our high-risk assets were about $14 million, just plus or minus. Eight of that was the Thompson Park pool. And so council obviously approved funding for that project. But when we went back and reran those numbers this year, what we found was that our high-risk is really more like $50 million now. And we've talked about this in the past, about the decay curve on assets and how over time those assets age. And if you don't put preventative maintenance back into those things, they start to decay much quicker. Really what we've run into is a lot of our assets really can't be repaired, they need to just be replaced. Anecdotally, we've had park maintenance over the last few years, decks on playgrounds have fallen through, they've had to go weld them back up. That's a very short-term fix, that's not a long-term fix. And so we've got some significant asset needs that need to be addressed, and that's across the board. What we heard from our community when we did our Parks Master Plan, so once we knew where we were in terms of assets, that's where we started the Parks Master Plan. And when we did the Parks Master Plan, we had the Red X Campaign and we had almost 7,000 people fill out that survey. And at that time, 69, almost 70% of the community said that they would support increased funding for parks. Some of those things, and we've talked about some of the investment priorities, and this is just a little one pager that we had put together, kinda outlining some of the items from the Parks Master Plan. But what we heard loud and clear in the first round of public engagement, but also the second round of public engagement, is fix what you got. Fix what you've got, fix what you've got, fix what you've got. And so that really is our goal, is to start trying to address those high priority issues that we are, we know we're already facing. And so obviously, we've got a new tool, we just approved, the council just approved the Parks Master Plan. It gives us some, some tools and some things to talk through as we work with our park board and making recommendations to the council and some of those items on how we move forward as a department. I will just say very briefly, in one of the chapters, it talks about some action items, some ideas on how to move things forward potentially. That includes things like increased fees and revenues, reducing the level of service. We're considering that at this time. Reduced subsidies, eliminating high-risk ventures, those are some of those partnerships or ideas that may be a little bit more risky. They might have a higher return, but they might be a little bit risky venture. Diversify funding, so a couple of years ago, we brought the John Stiff Development Project. That's an example of diversifying funding so that it's not just from the tax rate. And then just to maintain focus on core services. I think within that, there's a lot of other conversations that could be had, but those are some of the main talking points and main ideas that our consultant provided as a part of the Parks Master Plan on ways to start moving things forward.
I think it's important to note, you know, question was asked about parks' capital spending, parks' budgets, every year for the last 20 years, with the exception of two. The parks' budget, operating budget, has gone up every single year, with the exception of two, over the last 20 years. Same is true on capital spending, but the opposite, spending on capital expenditure's gone down every year except for two. Now.
Parks capital, you're saying?
Parks capital, correct, parks capital. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that costs keep going up, available revenues are the same, so you have to decide, are we going to do capital projects or are we gonna continue to operate and try and maintain our parks? And when I say try and maintain, what I mean is, we were falling short, you know, with the revenue staying the same, available revenue staying the same, the ability to maintain and keep up with an ever-growing parks inventory was diminished, not just diminished, but compounding. That diminished ability to maintain and keep up was compounded because not only were, was inflation happening and more money was moving from capital to operations, but also the number of parks and the amount of parks that we were maintaining was going up. We continued to grow that inventory without considering, well, without the ability to maintain that growing inventory. So it's a, it's a, it's a two-edged sword where the amount of money available for capital projects was going down, the amount of money for parks' operations was going up every single year, however, it wasn't keeping up with inflation or with the amount of parks that we were trying to keep up with. So we had a real challenge in parks. That was brought to a head through the Parks Asset Management Plan and then also is better informed through the Parks Master Plan, as Michael has mentioned. Just wanted to give you a little bit of extra information as far as, you know, what's been happening? Why has, capital expenditures been going down? Why have, why has the park budget been going up, but it's not adequate to keep up with the requirements of that budget? So it wasn't going up as far as it would need to go every year to be able to keep up with the growing asset inventory, along with the associated inflation, additional personnel, et cetera, to be able to operate all those additional facilities. So I wanted to give you a little bit more information there.
Okay, council, let's, let's start some dialogue between the five of us of, you know, what, what information do we need from staff to begin to give them direction on where we go with parks and the spending that we do have? How should it be prioritized?
Well, Mayor, just for me, myself, I can just tell you a few of the things that's on my list right now, that is lighting at our parks. I mean, that's huge for me because we have so many citizens that walk early in the morning or late in the evenings, whatever the case may be, but the lighting and then sidewalks that are uneven. And, and I know the parking lots, you know, there's potholes. So those are my three top things.
Just to wrap, well, I'll keep, come back, I have a question for you about infrastructure bill that passed. Howard?
I'm glad you brought up about lighting. I was reminded since Sunday, it sure does get dark early.
Yeah.
And I'd like to know how much it would cost to get the lighting that doesn't work up and working. I don't know how much that is.
And is that, is that a project that we would do maybe with Excel Energy or work with them? Partner with them?
Okay, so lighting, again, another priority. And sports fields lightings, I mean, cause we, they can't play in the summertime after dark without, and we can't hold tournaments. Again, I, I mean, I think, Michael, from my point of view, anything that's revenue-generating, that's a dollar well-spent. And lighting for our sports fields will generate revenue through tournaments. And we're, we're not currently generating that, and we, I think we've got to focus more on that, so I'm a, I'm a yay for more information on lighting.
Well, if we're gonna head down that path, I think the lighting is gonna be real important, but if we're gonna talk about things that are gonna generate funding, does that mean, how do we make, because one of the number one things that we kept hearing whenever we had the discussions with all the citizens was the quality of the fields that we had and that kind of thing. And so I think that's gotta be really addressed. I've talked to several different people that are involved with those associations, and it's one thing to have turf, I mean, to have fields, but it's another thing that I didn't understand at that point in time was when you have fields that are turf, they become 24/7, 365. And so if we're gonna talk about the ability to generate income on it, then I think those are things that also have to be talked about in the plan. The other thing that I think we have to talk about is, you know, I don't wanna talk about this part, but we're gonna have to, is gonna be, do we end up in the maintenance side of it? Are there parks that if we take offline, because basically all the playground equipment is in stage four, stage five, do we take those off? When you take those offline, does that really save money or does it not save money? I assume that we're, we're gonna have, the, the age of these parks, that we probably got infrastructure with sprinkler systems that are like a gazillion years old on top of all of that, that really probably have needed to have been addressed. And that's why the parks look some of the way that some of the parks look. The other thing is gonna be, you know, I, I hate for us to bring up this one, but I think we're gonna have to talk about the zoo. Is that a viable candidate anymore based upon the way things are and the way that that, that the zoo is structured at this point in time? Do we have to go back and address golf again? Is there a savings by taking a golf course offline? Is there, or on the opposite side of that, is there, can we offset that by raising fees? We, we have the lowest fees in the state for playing municipal golf, not by a little, but by a long shot. It is by far the most economical place to play in the state of Texas. So do we have to figure out some way where we make it come closer to breaking even than what it already does? Those are just a few of the things that I think that we kinda have to, we have to, another one that I think we need to go back and address is I'd like to see the, the deal where we were talking about, the deal at John Stiff Park. That is a potential revenue-generating opportunity. I think at this point in time, so if we wanna keep our parks or head them in the direction that we have to find some ways to make up for the, the $3.3 to $3.8 million of revenue that we need currently to make that work. And so that's gotta, we've gotta figure out some way to make that happen. And does that include taking things offline and which, what would be the order of offline? And do you have parks that the playground equipment is in so bad of repair that it's better for you to just remove all the playground equipment off the park and maybe maintain it with mowers? I don't wanna see that happen, but I think we're gonna have to consider all of those things as we kind of end up moving forward. So those would be, that's just a start, I could go on, but I'll stop at that.
So you're wanting to see information on what things are we subsidizing? What, what park operations are not cost-neutral? What park operations are generating revenue? And what park operations does it cost us more to maintain than others? So like we could do an across-the-board look and, and see what are we getting the most bang for our buck on?
And also, I still think we have to talk about potentially, do we increase revenue significantly if at each one of the baseball parks, one of those fields is actually turfed and becomes 24/7? Along with the lighting that goes on with that, does that then make this a place where people are having more tournaments come to town, which generates more revenue all the way around, whether it's hot tax or whether it's sales tax or fees or whatever else that goes along with that? I think we have to, we have to look at all of those options also.
I, I mean, I know the economic opportunities are there. What I'm really interested in focusing on are our actual revenue, like revenue to the city budget.
Yeah.
Because that's, we've got numbers that we're short on and, and we don't, I don't know how to make them up. So we have to start looking at our programs to generate more revenue, and that's the only way I think we have to do it. So yes, I'm interested in the economics to our local businesses, and we all are, but I think I really wanna see information going forward about actual dollars into city revenue. Councilmember Stanley?
Thank you, Mayor. So to move forward, if we can go back just a step, $3.3 million per year in just, in fixing assets, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So that would be going in, repairing and replacing those aging assets.
So in maintaining, we have a budget that's maintenance, you know, mowing the fields, picking up the trash, things like that. The $3.3 million that you're outlining is not maintaining, but replacing fencing, bleachers? What else are we talking about?
Correct. So you've got your normal operations, which is our maintenance budget, which would cover personnel, fleet, all of the things required to maintain the parks. So mowing parks, putting the play, chips underneath the playgrounds, all of the things that go along with park maintenance. What that $3.3 to $3.8 is really our assets. So the things with, located within our parks, whether it's a bench, a swimming pool, a trash can, a shelter, that's where we've been short in terms of the capital funding. So when you look at the price tag of a playground being $150,000, and our capital budget over the last few years has been $100,000, that's not even enough to replace one playground. So you start to fall into a deficit, and that's where we've got a lot of aging assets within our parks.
Okay, so that, that's really helpful. So our 44 cent tax rate that passed put $3.4 million into Parks and Rec and additional funding?
I believe that was the number, 3.2.
3.2. And then if it had passed the 48 cent tax rate, that would have brought 4.3? 4.4, 4.5. So a million-two difference in the failed election? So looking at that, your 3.2 million that you have in additional monies that will be there every year to take care of, we're on about a 12-year replacement plan, we have roughly $40 million in assets, is that right?
We've got $100 million, we've got 50, that's high risk. So we're already 50 million that are either failed or about to fail.
And that number will change every year, given what's inventoried as failing?
Yeah.
Likely to go, is it trending up or trending down?
Well, it's gonna, if we don't make improvements, it's gonna keep trending down. So part of what it is with an asset, in order to extend the life and to spend the least amount of dollars over the longest period of time, you wanna do preventative maintenance, which helps to extend the life of the asset. What we've done is we've basically driven that asset to failure. So I would use the analogy of you buy a car, you don't change the oil, you don't change the tires, you don't fix the windshield wipers, your car's gonna wear out pretty quick. And I think that's what we've seen, is a lot of our assets have, are at a point of failure. You really can't, there's no point in fixing the tires when the engine's blown on the car. So it's, it's fixing and replacing those assets.
And this 3.2 of additional funds that we're putting into parks annually through this budget is not just for asset replacement, it's also gonna enhance maintenance and provide us additional capacity to be able to keep up with the maintenance responsibilities that we have. Now, we have to have some conversations because we'd still, our maintenance requirements outstrip our, our, our resources, even at this point, even with that, those additional Now, we have to have some conversations because we'd still, our maintenance requirements outstrip our, our, our resources even at this point, even with that, those additional resources. So there's, that's why I was saying there's still additional conversations that have to be had there.
So what was the old budget? Cause I know we had 100,000 dollars in capital expenditures in 2020 that was due to COVID. How, how much did we not spend in that budgetary year that we, we normally would have because of COVID?
When is normal is the, is the question.
Well, how much did we spend in 2019? What was the budget in 2018?
Roughly 100,000 dollars for the last handful of years. It's been zero one year. It's been as high as 470 in the last five years. But for every single year outside of that one increase, we've had declining expenditures in, uh, uh, capital expenditures at, in the parks area for more than a decade.
Is the decline in capital expenditures on park due to COVID?
No.
Yeah, I think, I just want to clarify.
Oh, I didn't know that. I missed that question.
So that's a good way to phrase it. We, we still had our budget for normal park maintenance and, and day-to-day business operations?
During COVID, some of those positions were frozen, and that's on the maintenance side. So some of our park maintenance positions were frozen during COVID, yes.
Yeah, during COVID, we spread out, we stretched out the amount of time between park mows. We froze hundreds of part-time positions and then a lot of full-time positions. I don't have the exact number. A lot's not a good number to use. It's very general. But we stopped hiring throughout the entire department, throughout the early, I would say, the first eight months of COVID. So we, we got really aggressive to try and not spend money that we, that we could at all avoid spending. And that's not just in parks, it was in all of our other departments as well, with very few exceptions. So yeah, we did reduce expenditures significantly. We did not cut the capitals, the capital budget such that it was. It was only 100,000 dollars that year. So we did not cut that.
So I think I'm, I'm looking to kinda break this down compartmentally. 3.2 million in additional monies coming in. You know, how much would you forecast in that 1.2 million of, of if the, if the election had passed? What that would have accomplished? What is our, how many years do we need to have a replacement plan? And what I'm, all I'm trying to define here is, is what is the size of the problem we're looking at? Are we looking at a million dollar issue per year? Are we looking at a 40 million dollar issue in the next three years? So, so if, if we can take it and break it out over a replacement plan over the next 10, 15 years, then I think that's a smaller bite, a little easier for us to manage in moving some things around. So the zoo is a good, a good example. You know, without the zoo, how much, how much savings do you net on your budget if you were to not have a zoo here? After much discussion and, and if anybody decided to move that way. Also duplicates, you know, I know, I know that our consultant was talking about duplicate parks. So I would be interested in getting kind of a bottom line of maybe from you, Michael, of here's how many duplicates we have that are within, I think she said a mile and a half to, was it three miles was the max?
No, it's, it depends on the scale of the park. So it's usually between a half mile and a mile. And so, yes, we've, we've started looking at some of these more from an operational side. So obviously our assets, you know, we're currently at 50 million. So we're already behind, even if we were to spend 10 million dollars a year, that gets you just to fixing those assets. The ones that are currently either good or are on the border are probably gonna start sliding into that failed state. And so we can run those different analysis and see where are we gonna be in five years and 10 years? What does that asset cliff look like? You know, how many, how many assets are in a failed state? I, I think the reality is when you look at our network, the playgrounds are falling apart, the ball fields are falling apart. A lot of the infrastructure hasn't really been improved since probably the seventies. You look at the lighting throughout almost all of our parks, it's, it's dated. You know, we had the conversation about the John Stiff soccer lights. Excel went and upgraded the transformer and the chief electrical would not let us reconnect our lights. So we've got three soccer field lights at John Stiff that have lights that are not connected. And I think that's a concern that we see with all of our sports complexes.
One thing that was mentioned to me was, why are y'all, are y'all so tight on budget that you can't afford lights? It's the, we are tight on budget, but the fact that the, some of our sports field lights are not working right now is not a budgetary issue. I mean, it is a budgetary issue because we have to replace them, but it's not because we couldn't afford the power to run the lights. It was because the infrastructure was placed on the SPS side and they had to do it. It's not that they were doing anything bad. But the infrastructure that we had in place was 40 or 50 years old and could not be re-energized with the new systems that SPS had put in place, not safely. So that's why, that's one of the very high, and, and Mayor Protim, Councilmember Sauer, the mayor, and I think everybody has mentioned that lights are a priority. I don't wanna call anybody out or leave anybody out, but it's, it's been a huge priority. And that's one of the things we wanna do very, at the, at the, at the earliest opportunity. But it is something that we don't necessarily have the resources to do. But it, but it wasn't because we couldn't afford the power. It was just because once that infrastructure was replaced on the SPS side, we had to replace all of our electrical infrastructure in that area to be able to re-energize that infrastructure.
More questions?
Yeah, the other thing would just be AISD, CISD. You know, how many parks are we currently maintaining or, or contributing to that we don't own? And I know that's in that master plan, so if we could revisit that, put that back on the table. And then what are the appropriate steps in, in talking to our taxing entity counterparts? And, and you know, how we share the costs on that and coming back to that? Cause I'm not sure, I know that, that probably kind of organically developed over decades. And I, I think it'd be worth looking back into of, from a point of fairness. You know, if we, if we just look at all of it right now, what can we do working together? Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
So can I ask one other thing?
Uh huh, sure.
So this one's gonna come off of Cole's question. I understand the part about, do we have, do we really have 15 years worth of parks left? Because we went from, if I'm remanded, if I'm wrong, we went from, was it a year and a half ago? We had 14 million in assets that were critical to now we've got 50 million out of 100 million in assets that are now critical. So what's gonna happen to that number 18 months from now? And so it doesn't seem to me like we've got 15 years to put X amount of dollars per year into it. Is that a, would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, if you're, it, it's just like the analogy I used. If you don't spend any money fixing those things, they're just gonna continue to decline. And so what will end up is that high-risk category will continue to grow. So when we had first completed that study, we saw a lot of things that were in that mid-range. So there was things that were good, almost brand new. You had a lot that were kind of fair or that were in the middle of the decay curve. And then your, your high risk was about 14 million. We had a big chunk that was in that middle range, that was on that edge of the decay curve. And what we've seen is a lot of those things have slid from that mid-range down to the high range. So what we would expect is that the things that are good or new are gonna start to slide into that mid-range. And those things that are in the mid-range will continue to slide into high risk. So, you know, obviously if you replace assets, they now go up to the green category, back to the new category. But it just becomes a question of funding and how do you start to address the, the current backlog, but also the ongoing costs as you move forward.
So was it an outside entity that came up with the 50 million?
Correct. It was, we've got software that was given to us by the consultant that did that study.
Well, I, I think that's real important because it would be one thing if it came internally. It's another thing if it comes externally telling us that this is a problem that we see externally as opposed to us trying to create in our own problem.
And I think it was also identified in the master plan as well. So we saw it very clearly during the asset management plan. But I think it was reiterated by our consultant that came and did the parks master plan as well, that we've got aging infrastructure that needs to be replaced. Or you have to have a strategy. And I think that's where they laid out those four or five different things that as a, as a park staff and as the park board needs to wrestle through those and bring recommendations back to council on how we move forward with some of this. Because I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all. Some of it may be looking at fees, some of it may be reducing levels of service, some of it may be looking at surplus or duplicate, duplicated services. So I don't know that there's a one-size-fits-all. I think we're gonna have to look at it from multiple angles and work with our park board on that and come up with some recommendations on how we move forward. So.
Okay. Other comments, just coming back around, anything that got?
Something that Cole mentioned is reviewing the, understand we addressed AISD and how we split costs. And we proposed some changes to make it fairer. I'd like to view that.
We've begun those conversations with AISD.
Say again?
We've begun those conversations with AISD. We have many more conversations to be had. They are partners and we wanna make sure that we are as sensitive to them as possible while still being sensitive to our taxpayers. So we're evaluating those service circles for different parks. We're working with AISD and, and like I said, you know, they're partners. They recognize the challenges we have. They also recognize the challenges they have. Everyone has challenges funding those, I don't wanna say redundant, but those parks that, that, that maybe don't fall into a justifiable or defensible location with regard to serving our community. But they do serve a purpose for the schools, et cetera. So we're gonna continue working with them and we'll keep council updated as we go and seek guidance from council when we get to decision points. But we have begun the process of communicating with them and, and I don't wanna get too far in front of that conversation because, you know, we're, we're only at the very early stages of that.
So it may be too early to present to the council what you think. I'd heard that, that what was proposed to AISD would benefit us 700,000 dollars.
Well, the, the Cole mentioned duplication, I think, I think he said duplication, but duplication of services is the concept he was going for. And, and that's when you have multiple different parks that are serving a particular neighborhood or a particular area, when we have other parts of the town that don't have any parks serving that area. So we wanna make sure that we're, we're allocating our parks' assets and resources in a way that best serves our entire community and doesn't duplicate efforts in certain parts of town. Where schools are located are not necessarily located where parks need to be located. So from a municipal park standpoint and then from a school recreational standpoint, in some cases, in many cases, they're not aligned, but in some cases they are. So we wanna work with AISD to make sure that we have a full understanding of, of what our needs are and what their needs are. And then we allocate resources or responsibility accordingly. And I may not be answering the question you're asking.
I, I think the main thing is that we would like a report on where are we with those? What, what's in the inventory? What do the contracts look like? What, we would like to be a part of the conversation in steering you guys on how we go to the school district and is this an opportunity for us to figure out cost savings for our taxpayers? And we recognize we share taxpayers with the school district. But what we know is we've been running this part of the relay race for a really long time and we need to pass the baton. We, we gotta rest for a minute because we just can't do it. We cannot maintain it. So we would like a report on what they, what we currently have in inventory, what our status is in sharing costs on each park with the school district and what you would recommend as far as going to the district to have a conversation about how to work on this together as partners.
Absolutely.
And is that correct, Howard?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And I understand it was offered to start whatever changes made in the allocation for a year. And maybe we need to do it now.
So timing on all of that.
The phasing of that is something we need to discuss with y'all and with AISD and make sure that, 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 you know, we're all on the same page. Nobody wants to, or can, go cold turkey.
Yeah, no, no, no.
At any point. So, so we were working on a year to try and phase that in. Maybe it needs to be more, maybe it needs to be less. So it, it really depends on perspective as to what the, the term needs to be. And we'll definitely present that part as we update on the, the school parks question.
Okay, so I, here, let me summarize and you guys let me know if we missed anything. We're interested in seeing a review of what assets are not cost neutral and what assets have potential to produce more revenue if we were to make a, a capital investment in them. What assets could be closed so that we could just stop the cost that's associated with them? And specifically kind of on that front, school parks, possibly other, other assets. And then what services that users bear part of the cost for that we could address with creating additional revenue through higher user services? Anything that we left out? So that's the information we wanna hear back. I mean, you know, we want it ideally neat and tidy and a few proposals. Like you said, it's, it's gonna be something we have to figure out and work like one of those little puzzles where you have to push the numbers around till they're all in order. So there's no one answer, but that's the data that we need to see from you guys as we work on this.
The part about the private, possibly the public-private partnership deal at John Stiff. We need to revisit that.
Yeah, no, we didn't. So I, I think bringing us an update on that. Because again, if that's revenue generating.
And we, that probably needs to be just a, a, a discussion and updating concept because it's not just limited to John Stiff as far as the parks that might be suitable for a public-private partnership that would generate significant revenue to the city to offset tax impacts of parks' maintenance. So it'd include Rick Klein and a number of other large significant parks, so.
Thompson.
Thompson.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. We'll definitely make sure that we.
Martin Road.
We'll review that specifically, specific to Stiff, but also in general to all of our non-dedicated parkland that is available for use like that. Now, we were never abdicating for relinquishing parks. But having a relationship with a private entity that could generate resources to offset tax costs to park maintenance and park operations would, I think, be something we need to evaluate at the very least.
One more idea, which I think we've evaluated in the past too, and none of us liked it. None of us are gonna like it now, but since we're just asking for information, developing one of our golf courses, like if we didn't operate it as a golf course and we platted it and sold it off to a developer, I mean, what would that look like? What would it save us in operating that every year? And what revenue potential, obviously it would be one-time revenue, not annual revenue. But could we then take that and leverage the sale of that property toward future park expenses? So that's something else. Not fun topics. Okay, anything else? Jared, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Michael, you think you have what you need from us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much for that. Item 1D is updates from council members serving on outside boards and commissions. The first one is Amarillo Local Government Corporation. Reports from Councilmember Sauer and Smith. Will you turn your microphone on, please, sir? Thank you.
Sorry.
Good.
I was not at the meeting. But Andrew Freeman set it up so I could be on the telephone and listen to the whole meeting.
Good.
I didn't necessarily understand who was talking. But there's a, something's been worked on for several years since the Embassy Suites was built. It was in the contract that they would reach the AAA four diamond status. And they did that here in the last two weeks or so. So they've attained that. They, I think there was a time when, during COVID, that AAA didn't inspect. So it was probably delayed. And then another thing that they've been, the hotel has been working on, opening a steak place. And Lost Breezes opened about three weeks ago. And I understand they've been very busy. My wife and I went there one time. And so it was very good. It took a long time to get that opened. Another part of the LGC meeting was an executive session. But I'm not executive to, at liberty, you'd say anything about that. Sorry.
Let's trust you on that.
I don't know if Eddie has anything.
You know what? I couldn't get away from the office that day.
Okay. Good. Howard, thank you for that update. Any questions from Councilmember Stanley or Mayor Protim about that? Okay. Howard, I'm gonna leave the bicycle and pedestrian safety task force report with you too. Actually, you're the whole item. All, 1D is all you. 1D is all you.
I'll be done by five.
Okay.
I'm proud of the Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Committee. They, the four years I've been on that committee or so, they've chased a lot of rabbits. They hadn't caught one, but they chased a lot. But one thing's done, maybe, I don't know, two years ago, was to ask the police department for statistics on where accidents have happened, not vehicle, not car accidents, but pedestrian and bicycle accidents. So we got that information. And there were a lot of accidents on Amarillo Boulevard. And that's a Tex- dot street. So the staff of the city talked to Tex- dot, and they said, we'll do something about that. It's taken a while, but there's two hawks now on Amarillo Boulevard. They're up and functioning. And that's wonderful.
Wonderful, yeah.
I think we started it. Didn't cost the city a penny. Tex- dot paid for it. Another place was we started a hawk on the Georgia and the Rock Island Rail Trail. And I think we got a price break on that. But I've used that, and it works very good. And then on East 34th, Cap Rock High School is on East 34th, the north side of 34th. But they've expanded their campus to the south, athletic fields. And I understand they put in a hawk there. Spent $90,000 untold putting that in.
A I S D spent that or Tex- dot?
I don't know.
Is Kyle Snyder, Johnny?
A I S D. Do you know, Donnie?
Donnie.
A I S D. Cooperative effort. We did the labor. They paid for the materials.
They paid for the equipment, and City Memorial installed everything.
So I think that is benefit from this committee. It'll do nothing but save lives.
Yeah, that's great. Good work.
That's all I got.
That's it? Okay. Environmental Task Force, do you have anything?
Yes. The Environmental Task Force met, and they discussed the Every Drop Counts campaign. Didn't come to any recommendation need to be made. And then they got a review on the National Cleanup Day. Tons of trash was collected and thrown away due to that. And they've got plans to even make it better in the future. Donnie, you got anything to add? Thanks, I'm done.
Good. Questions on either of those two things? Okay, great. Thank you, Howard. We appreciate that. Item 1E is a discussion about renovation or construction costs for repairs at City Hall. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. To bring this item, I've got Jerry Danforth, our Director of Facilities, and we also have representatives from Sims Architecture. Is it? Want to make sure I said the name right? Sims Architects. And the purpose of this is to talk about new construction, renovation, costs that we can expect here, costs we can expect at Amarillo Hardware, costs that we could expect doing new construction because a lot of those questions have been asked by council previously from many different sides of the dais. So we wanted to bring a, as thorough a conversation as we could with regard to those discussion points. But it's really focused on renovation costs, both here and also at Amarillo Hardware, and also new construction costs to just kind of steer us as we try to refine what the way forward is on City Hall.
I really think in direct response to some conversations we had in August.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And Councilmember Stanley had some direct questions about, you know.
New construction.
New construction. And so this was work y'all have been doing in the last few months to address those questions.
Jerry, take it away. Introduce our guests and walk us through the conversation.
All right, Mayor and Council. This is Sheila Sims with Sims Architectural and John Gamble with Sims Architectural. We'll have some video for you to take a look at as well. But you're absolutely correct, Jared. This is a follow-up to some of the questions that were proposed to us earlier. Exactly how did we get to some of those things? And this is an independent view, separate and apart from where we had started originally as far as cost analysis, what was the best options? We wanted to take a look at it and have somebody basically double-check our numbers to make sure we were headed the right direction and some realistic numbers that are currently in this market. So we're not looking at Dallas or Austin or someplace else. We're looking at Amarillo numbers and the impact in Amarillo. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sheila to start the presentation, and then we can answer any questions as we go through this. Feel free to stop as we're going through, and we'll address them at that time.
And for me and Jerry, we're both butchering the name of the company. It's Sims Architects.
Thank you. Okay. Well, as he said, I'm Sheila Sims with Sims Architects. This is John Gamble. We really appreciate your time today. We know you have a long meeting, so we'll try to move through this as quickly as possible. Before we dive in, I just want to give you a little two-second snapshot about us because I think at one point, there was some confusion about where we were from. I had heard that we were from California. We are not from California. I'm sure you were very much Amarillo natives, and we have one office here. So our firm was actually founded in 1982 by Tom Lavine. And so for 38 years, we were Lavine Architects. And I'm sure many of you have heard that name. About two years ago, Tom decided to retire, so we had an ownership transition. And at the beginning of this past year, we actually became Sims Architects. We have nine professionals in our office with five licensed architects, a licensed interior designer. And I threw up just a few downtown projects. Obviously, we've done millions of dollars worth of work here in Amarillo and in, all in the United States, as a matter of fact. But these are just a few that we've done, actually in downtown. One of my favorite projects was the Santa Fe renovation that we did with Potter County several years ago for the city of Amarillo. We worked on the Sims building. We also did the convention center parking garage and retail center. And then most recently, we did the W T Amarillo Center, which hopefully some of you have seen. It's a great transformation of an old, not very attractive building. So just kind of moving on. I think it's obvious that Amarillo is growing. Our last census showed us over 200,000, which is great. Businesses keep coming in. With that comes people and jobs and all that. Where the city has to keep up because now we have all these new citizens, and you have to increase your services to keep up with the growing population. So that's one of the things we want to kind of talk about. City Hall has been kind of crowded for a long time. Back in 2015, we worked with the city to do the Sims building, which helped a lot. And I still think back, I can't believe that all these people were in this building, but I remember what they were, and people were literally sitting on top of each other. But in 2015, we moved several departments out of the city to try to alleviate some of that pressure. And so these are some of the departments. And hopefully, you've all been in the Sims building. It turned out very beautiful. That brings us to the point that we're at now. Even though we've made those changes, we still, City Hall is crowded. And so we've come up, you guys have been discussing this for a very long time. These are kind of the three options that have come to the forefront. Renovate existing City Hall. Renovate the historic Amarillo Hardware building and build something new. So, you know, we're down for all of those. But we want to discuss some of the things that we've come up with and hopefully bring some information to you that you haven't already heard. So, because like I said, I know you've been discussing this for a long time. The first building I want to start with is the Amarillo Hardware building. It is a very iconic building. It was originally built in 1938 when Amarillo Hardware was booming. It was added on to in the 50s. They literally doubled the size of the building. It's a beautiful example of the Art Deco style. It was designed by a local architect, Guy Carlander, who actually did a lot of buildings in and around Amarillo. But it's just, it's a beautiful piece of our history. It's been there for a long time, and it needs to stay around for a long time. And you already own it, bonus. If you look around Amarillo, we have a lot of great buildings. I mean, we really do. The architecture here, for architecture nerds like me and John, we love, we love these old buildings. And it's always exciting to see them live beyond their years. I mentioned the Santa Fe Building earlier. That is a very noticeable piece of the Amarillo skyline. People that aren't from Amarillo, they recognize that Santa Fe Building. The Barfield Building sat for years at Sixth and Polk, and we all just hoped that something would happen. And it finally did, and it's been recently opened as a beautiful signature hotel. Same thing with the Fisk Building, you know, Federal Building. There's lots of buildings around town that, for whatever purpose they were built for, people have gone in, repurposed them, sometimes for the same purpose, sometimes not, to keep using those buildings. And we have that opportunity here. Just looking at the location of the Amarillo Hardware building, it's just east of your existing City Hall, there at the corner of Sixth and Grant. And so it's still adjacent to all the other city-owned properties, which makes it, you know, in close proximity for the people that are moving back and forth between all of the properties. It's right in the heart of the warehouse district. There's a lot of existing, some of those warehouses have already been repurposed into offices. Some of them are still being used as warehouses. But it's, you know, it's a great area that I hope in this wave of restoration that we've seen in downtown continues to move that direction. One thing that came up during COVID that I think we all have appreciated is drive-up facilities. You know, we wouldn't have made it, where would we get our food? You know, you drive up to a Toot and Totem and get a gallon of milk. Drive-up facilities became a piece of our everyday life that we really came to depend on. That's something that the city has really expressed a desire for, especially in their utility billing department, is because there's still a lot of people that visit the building just to come pay utilities and interact with the staff that way. A drive-up facility would keep people from having to enter the building, but still allow them that contact. Size. The Amarillo Hardware building, as I mentioned, was added on to in the 50s. It is about 150,000 square feet. Okay, if you compare that to the existing City Hall that we're in now, that's about 80,000 feet. So you can see that there's room, not only for us to move into that space, but also gives us a lot of room to grow. One thing that we've been working on over the last few weeks with Laura's help and Jerry's help is programming all of the departments in City Hall. And we have walked through the building, toured, interviewed. And one thing that we asked every department to do was to give us not only what are your current needs, but what are your three-to-10-year needs? Okay, so where do you see your staff growing? What kind of new programs are coming about? You know, we have the new call center that's coming in line that's going to need space. And so we've kind of wrapped up that programming last week, and we're trending around close to 100,000 square feet in asks for the three-year mark, okay? And so already, we're needing more than the 80,000 feet that is here. So 150,000 gives us room to grow. Okay, structural integrity of this building. This building, again, was built in '38. Good quality construction. We hired an independent licensed structural engineer to go in and evaluate the building, and he has reviewed it. And, now, he hasn't drilled holes in it or anything like that. But visual inspection and looking at the building, he has found it to be in excellent condition, especially the original part built in '38. The addition in '51, there were a few, like cosmetic issues, like just a few cracks and things like that, but nothing at all that in any way sacrifices the integrity of the building. And a lot of those things in a renovation would be easily taken care of. It's an all-concrete structure, you know, being designed to be the Amarillo Hardware building. Obviously, they had very heavy loads, so it is a very substantial building. One thing, over the last couple of months while we've been working on this, we went to two different general contractors here in town that have done lots of work on public buildings in recent years. And my question to them was, what is the value of this structure? Like, if we were to rebuild this, start from scratch, you know, whatever, what is the value of this structure? And how long would it take us, if we started from scratch, to build and get to this point? And their question to me was, or their answer to me, sorry, I asked the question. Their answer to me was, basically, they value the structure, they said, and again, not going back with beams, but going back with concrete and replicating what is here, they value it between $10 and $12 million, okay? And from a time standpoint, they think it would take us between six and eight months to get to the point that we are now. So the fact that you paid less than $5 million for the building, originally, your return on investment is already huge, as you can see, if you choose to use this building. Okay. There are different construction types, and we do all of them. As architects, you know, we work with a variety of clients. There's two that I kind of want to talk about today real quickly. Publicly funded projects, okay? That's what we're talking about with the City Hall. That's schools, municipalities, universities. These entities, they only get money every so often. And when they do a project, their expectation is for this project, or this building, to last for 50 years. I mean, that's, anytime we do a school, again, whether it's working for A I S D, Texas Tech, W T, we want the building to last, okay? So with that, we use very durable materials. We choose very energy-efficient M E P systems because one thing about the energy efficiency is we want to lower our operating costs, okay? Keep those down. We want to make sure that the building is very low maintenance. You guys have been talking about maintenance a lot. What this translates into, though, sometimes is a higher upfront cost because you're paying for these materials. You're paying for this more energy-efficient systems. But it's going to pay dividends to you in the long run because your building's going to last, and you're going to have lower operating costs. Another type of construction, and again, we do this day in and day out, is usually more with private owners, more like commercial projects. These are like retail, hospitality, residential. And that doesn't just mean houses. It means townhomes, you know, apartment buildings. With these projects, we typically, they're wanting to reduce their initial investment, okay? Because they want to get the building built, get moved in, and then start making money off of it. So these buildings typically have a shorter lifespan. A lot of times, they rebuild. You've seen this with, you know, fast food restaurants, McDonald's, for instance. They will rebuild their stores every 10 to 15 years, but that's part of their model because they want to refresh their image, okay? So they're building these less expensive buildings. They typically use more package M E P systems, okay? Less expensive, higher energy costs. They'll use prefabricated structural systems, whether that's metal or wood. But basically, they have lower upfront costs. So these buildings are less expensive. And there's a place for both of these. And there's a place for like commercial, but a City Hall is not one of those places. This is where we want to spend the money to get the building right and have it last for 50 years beyond us. Let our children enjoy it. And again, be good stewards of the money by lowering our operating costs. Okay. Current construction costs. This is like a crazy topic these days because with COVID, costs have been very difficult to predict. Because really, sometimes it doesn't even come down just to cost. It comes down to availability of materials. We've had issues on a lot of our construction projects being able to just get materials, you know, with all of the supply chain issues that there have been. So anyway, again, we sat down with two very well-respected, well-qualified local contractors. Again, I don't want to talk to people that aren't here, that don't talk to people that aren't here, that don't understand the climate here. And they have, they're currently building and have built several of these type of projects that I'm talking about over the last couple of years. The Texas Tech Vet School, projects for ASD and CISD. There's several projects going on at Amarillo College right now that we're working on. So we've taken all of this information that we've gotten from them to basically try to come up with these costs. And so, from them, what they're telling us for this type of construction, renovation costs for heavy renovation, like what we're talking about, is going to run in the $240 to $270 a square foot range. New construction, because I know that's one of the topics, one of the options, that is really more in the $375 to $400 a square foot range. So you can tell there's quite a bit of difference, but again, part of that goes back to what you're reusing, which in this case would be the structure. Okay. Another option is to build new. Okay? As I just said, you're looking at higher construction costs if you do that, $375 to $400 a square foot. Longer construction time because again, you're not starting with a structure, you're starting with dirt. Okay? And if any of you ever watched a building project go, they work on the, the ground and the dirt for months before you ever see anything come out of the ground. I know people get frustrated with that, but there's just a lot that goes into preparing a foundation to make sure that it lasts. The biggest hurdle that we see with building new is a site. Okay? So, a City Hall belongs downtown and it needs to be downtown. And so, when you start looking around downtown for a site to build a project like this, it doesn't exist right now. For this size of a building and for some parking and things to go with it, you really need a full city block. So, that's the hurdles that we see there. Okay? The other option that's been talked about is renovating this building. The issues in this building are not simply cosmetic. Jerry has talked a lot about the failings of the MEP systems and the things that need to, it, it, it needs a complete mechanical, electrical, plumbing replacement. There are codes that we need to look at, such as ADA compliance and life safety and energy code. And when we start looking at all of those things, you're talking about a gut and redo of the building. And so, you, you would have to just start over. One thing this building has too, that's kind of tough, these skinny windows, you have very limited natural lighting, which again, over the years, a lot of people have done studies about the value of natural light to people in workspaces and just, it makes them more productive, makes them healthier. So that's a very important thing. Big hurdles for this deal. Temporary relocation. If you're going to get and redo this building, where do all these people go? Okay? So you have to find a place somewhere, again, downtown to house your entire city offices. And so, first of all, you have to find a place for that to happen. Then you've got to spend some money renovating that space, getting that, getting it ready for these people to move into because they're going to be there probably 18 to 24 months, depending on the length of construction. So you're going to have those renovation and lease costs that you'll never get back. Okay? And again, availability, finding, finding that space to move into. And then, even at the end of the day, you still have the square footage deficit that we talked about before. This is an 80,000 square foot building versus, we're looking at 100,000 square foot in the next three years that needs to be programmed for the building. The building doesn't really lend itself to an addition. Not to say that an, an addition couldn't be made on it, but just with the style and the architecture of it, it would be, it would be very difficult. So, this is the fun part. Back in May, we had to submit a request for qualifications to be hired as the architect. And during that time, we kind of took it upon ourselves to do a 3D model of the Amarillo Hardware Building to hopefully give you an idea of the potential that this building has to be a new City Hall. And so, John Gamble is going to come over here and drive us through that.
Let's see if we can get switched over to the...
You don't just...
Okay. Sorry about that. Let's pull up the 3D rendering here.
John, will you pull that mic up just a little bit?
Yes. I'm tall, so you'll...
Everybody at home wants to hear what you're saying.
For sure. Well, thank you again. When we started looking at the Amarillo Hardware Building, it's actually Hidden Jewels. We got pretty excited about it. I'm actually starting back at Seventh and Grant because that was the original front door of the Amarillo Hardware Building. And when you get up close, Sheila mentioned Guy Carlander, who was an architect back in the 20s, 30s, and 40s in Amarillo. He did a lot of very, very nice buildings. And so even in this warehouse building, there's a lot of detail. So I'd encourage you, if you hadn't noticed it, to go drive by there sometime and just take a look at the Art Deco style that is on the building. So we wanted to start there because we wanted to continue that through if this building is selected to move forward with the City Hall. Zooming up here, as we know, it's right across from Hodge Town. And so, the idea that we can see Hodge Town and you can see the building from Hodge Town are two nice things. Every time we go to a game, we look over there and notice Amarillo Hardware Company. And so it's something we, it is a nice location, as Sheila said. We'll zoom around to the front of the building. One of the things we first started talking about was having a place adequate in this building for, size for council chambers. So we looked at an idea, and again, these are just ideas we're throwing out here right now, is to go up to the third floor and actually raise the roof area in the center of the building and get a little bit larger column spacing up there so that there's room for a space larger than this. Because as we, we've seen now, people are in overflow many times. So it'd be nice to have a, a little bit larger space for seating in that council chambers. We'll zoom back and look at the building from above and then down to ground level. Again, looking at the idea of the Art Deco style, we wanted to bring an entry because essentially what was the back of the building where the old railroad spur came through would become the front door to the new City Hall if this were selected. And so we wanted to pick up on some of that Art Deco style. As you'll notice, the council chambers could sit up here and have some nice views out over the city. And I think that's something that's really nice. And again, we'll have a nice view from Hodge Town seeing City Hall. The idea of reusing the Amarillo from the Amarillo Hardware Company and relighting those with LED, LED lighting is a thought that we've brought up there because that's such an iconic thing on the Amarillo skyline. We'll kind of zoom around the building. One of the big deals is that the, obviously, the windows in the building are 1938, 1951. So we'd, we'd want to replace those windows with much more energy-efficient windows. But we would be able to use something that had that same nice warehouse look so that it would look vintage, even though it was new insulated glass that's much more energy-efficient. We looked at some ideas of some awnings over windows up high and that's something that we, we could study even more, providing a covered entry into the building. And because the building's up above grade by approximately three and a half or four feet, ramps so that it's accessible to everyone, we'd have to look at the, you know, the way the entrances get into the building for exiting and for safety in the building. Just a few more views as we wrap around the building. And over here on the north end, where the old loading dock was, something we found was very interesting is we didn't find any leaks or damages that were, that had happened from that area. It was very well-constructed in that area, even down in the basement. We looked at the idea of, could we do that drive-up? Now, this is just one idea, but that so people would be able to come up here and could interact, directly interact with someone over a camera. Or there's things that could even be done in the evenings where there could be different types of consoles that could be used there so that they could be used 24 hours a day, that people could come and drop off payment or make payment for their utility bills and such. Wrapping back around the building, just looking kind of at the skyline of Amarillo, behind the Amarillo Hardware Building. And then we want to go down and we want to take just a small tour of what might look like inside the building. As we come to the front steps, the idea of bringing the Rick Husband statue to that place, it would be under a covered, sorry, it goes a little bit slower than I talk, trying to keep things in, going. Bringing that under the covering there so everybody that visits City Hall could see one of our local heroes. Trying to have some nice covering there at the entry of the building, picking up on that Art Deco style even in the front doors. And then as we enter the building, the idea of a modern industrial look is, is some ideas that have been put out there. Safety is obviously a big issue. We want the City Hall to be very welcoming, but we also think about if we ever have issues with COVID again and, and other safety, safety issues, having a receptionist, a person at the front that could direct people to where to go in the building, or call from a different floor and have someone from a different department come down and escort someone up to that department, or to that department. We've looked at utility billing and vital statistics being like they are now on the first floor. So it's very easy for people that, that's one of the departments that people interact with all the time. And then looking at the idea of there would be some, you know, different, different uses for opportunities to take some of the old kind of barn door-looking garage doors that they had on the building and reusing them throughout the building. Not movable, but picking up and using all the nice details in, in the interior of the building. Looking at the idea, like we said, of security, that maybe these are offices over here, we haven't gotten to that point. That's something that we're working on right now, that we would have offices, there would be glass so we could see, but there would be security there so that people would be, be able to be directed to the appropriate place. If there's, if they're coming to visit HR, someone from HR could, and as a new city employee, could come and visit with them and take them to an office or take them to a conference room where they would be having some type of seminar. What's great about this building is lots of columns in the building because as Sheila mentioned, there's a heavy structure there. But what's really nice is it works great for offices and open office type use that would be needed throughout the city, similar to some things that you see here in, in this building. We'll cut away to a floor plan. Obviously, this is just, just some thoughts that we've put out there. We're going to be studying deeper into this, but there's a potential for offices around the edges with some large open offices in the center and things of that sort. Want to zoom back out on the building to the exterior of the building to just give you another view. Again, trying to pick up on that Art Deco architecture style, solid materials that would be, be around for, as Sheila said before, 50 years or more. So, that's all of the pretty pictures we have so far.
All right. Y'all ready for our questions? Okay. Counsel, what questions do we have about the information or about other information that you think we need?
Just a curious question. You call this a basement. Is that a half basement or what do you, what do you call that?
Yeah, the basement is, it is. There's actually some windows down at the lower level there. Let me go to one of these views that's down lower. Okay. Yeah.
It's like a three-quarter basement. Does have windows that are at the top of the basement, but they're at the bottom of the ground when you're standing outside.
And that's something we've explored, that we could use something that wouldn't just be typical glass, it'd be easily broken. There's some other materials that would allow that natural light to come in and light that basement. It'd be very durable down at that ground level because, yeah, those windows are about this height when you walk in down in that basement.
All right. Thanks.
More questions, Howard?
No.
No?
Yes?
Okay, so, I guess from going back from when you were talking about funding these projects, and you talked about a public-funded project was between 240 and 270 dollars a square foot. So is that what you're talking about, what the cost would be on this building?
Yes.
Okay. So then, you then came up with new construction for a City Hall quality building at being between 375 and 400 dollars a square foot, correct?
Yes, sir. And that, and that's based on buildings that are being built right now. For example, the, the new Porter County Courthouse is running at about 380 dollars a foot and it's a very similar size. It's about 158,000 feet, I believe.
Okay. And it's covering the full city block?
Yes.
Okay. The one thing that you didn't say is, what would your estimate be per square foot on gutting this building?
This, this building? I, I wouldn't know. I mean, we would have to, that would be part of the, the construction cost, you know, that they would have to, is that what you're talking about?
You mean demolishing it or prepping it for renovation?
No, but you, the words that you used were, it would require a gut and redo.
Yes. And, and what I mean by that is everything that you see would, would go down literally to the studs of the walls and we would start, start from there.
And that's what I would call a gut. So do you have a price on what you would think it would cost to gut this building?
I'll let Jerry answer that.
Yes, we've looked at that, Councilman. It actually requires removing of all of the walls, some asbestos abatement. Right now, we're looking at between 100 and 120 dollars a square foot on average to do the total dismantling and the asbestos remediation that we would have to do here.
And then, that includes bringing it back up to code, doing everything that you need to, between 100 and 120 a foot?
That's correct.
And then we're still 20,000 square foot short for what is being programmed, is going to be needed by the city?
Correct. And that, that was a rather intensive survey with all of the departments.
Right.
Just to give you a little bit of background on that, we spent quite a bit of time with the departments. Sheila mentioned three to, three to 10, but we asked them to even go as far out as 20 years. You know, we're talking about a 50-year-old building. What do you foresee us being? And, and just as a little bit of background on it, you know, when we talk about the electronic metering that we're fixing to go into, that changes the dynamics of utility billing. So even those conversations were had, how does that change because we're now doing a larger call center to address what the public needs are? So, when you look at the floor plan that, that had, has been presented here, you understand that a call center is more needed than counter space in some of these situations. So, a lot of that came into this. And so, when we looked at this, and of course, Sims is under contract with us, whatever version you decide you want to go to, they're ready to, to move in that direction. So really, it's a, it's a business decision that you as counsel have to make to say, where's the best value for us? The, the known costs are there, but you're correct. The remodel cost of an existing structure and the other number that's not included in that is also the cost of relocation and leasing that space while you're remodeling. The difficulty of remodeling a space like this, a, a good example on the MEP, we have one heat system and one cooling system. So when I go to remodeling a structure like this, basically I take out all of the heat and all of the cooling at the same time. So I, I know a lot of people might say, well, let's just do a floor at a time. I can't do a floor at a time. Problem is, is I take out that one unit that controls the whole building.
Right. Okay. And so also, not included on this, that would be in the other two plans, there's no drive-up capability even possible with this, correct?
It's extremely difficult. As Sheila mentioned, the only expansion location that we truly have on this existing structure would be to go to the east, which takes out the approach. We've actually done some rough numbers on that years ago and it was right around 20 million dollars to do that. And that was, four years ago, we looked at those numbers. At that point in time, we could do a drive-through, but it takes out almost, almost 22% of the parking lot as it exists now, which reduces the amount of parking that's available for City Hall staff.
Okay. So could you possibly do an addition to create the 20,000 additional square foot go and maybe use one of these other building sites that we may, or the parking lot back to the northeast?
There, there's always a potential. It's what's the cost of that potential?
Right.
And, and at this point in time, with what we currently have as an asset, the asset's showing to be cheaper because of the amount of real estate we have available around that asset.
Well, I just think that if you're going to make this a level playing field, you have to consider a 20,000 square foot addition, plus you've got to also consider drive-up capabilities. So what in addition would that require?
Well, as I said, four years ago, that was 22 million to do that additional piece.
To do the addition, not, not necessarily the renovation of the rest of the building?
Not the renovation, just the addition.
So an additional 20,000 square feet plus drive-up would be about another 20 million four years ago?
Right.
On to the 120 dollars a square foot, 100 to 120 dollars a square foot to gut this building and...
Correct.
When, while we put a substantial amount of work into evaluating costs for this building a number of years ago, five or six years ago, you know, we haven't, other than renewing those prices or bringing current those prices, we haven't really put a lot of work into visioning forward, what would we do with this building right now, like looking at those additions. Because we would need a lot of guidance from counsel on, do we ever anticipate doing an arena? You know, things like that. Because if we did, you know, then we have to ask the question... Because if we did, you know, then we have to ask the question, where are we going to put it? Because we put a lot of money into this building, then we're obviously not going to put the arena here, or utilizing the buildings and the space that we bought to the east. So then we would need to think, are we putting it on the north lot across Third Street? That had its own challenges. Are we putting it somewhere else? Or are we not doing it at all? We just, and I'm not saying that like it's a bad thing, I'm saying, you know, or are we just not going to do it at all? So there's a lot of opportunity cost to investing a lot of money in this site, but we definitely wanted to present you updated costs for what we had looked at five or six years ago, and this site, and then also utilizing some of the information that we have now that we didn't have then with regard to key systems in this building.
More questions?
Kind of tapered off without really putting a definitive period on the matter.
Okay. More questions?
Yes, Mayor. So, really appreciate the presentation, so good to see that. How many square feet are needed in a city block of land?
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand acres?
Three hundred by three hundred, square feet.
Okay, say that again, Sheila, I'm sorry.
A city block is 300 by 300 feet, so.
So 90,000 square feet, if you were looking new construction, would, would cover parking as well as the, the building, or you would not have parking included in that?
We would. I mean, obviously, I think you would build a multi-story building to, to facilitate a, a new build, so, you know, depending on what your footprint was, you could have parking adjacent to the building. A very expensive option is to have parking, a parking garage, you know, as part of the building, so.
Okay, and so you'd have to locate the land, purchase the land, demo that, you know, anything that's on it, and then be able to construct the building at $400 a square foot?
Correct.
Okay, so your 400 a foot doesn't include land or demolition, anything in your guesstimate?
I don't think so, no. Again, I, you know, I, I don't know what Potter County, I was basing some of that on their 380 a foot, and again, that's coming from the two general contractors that I talked to. John and I are always low bidder, so we, we choose not to, to give money.
Never, never good to be the low bidder, right? As a, as a very well-respected architect and firm, if you were to forecast the next three years, what would be your estimate in cost increase with what you've seen on an average per square foot?
I think that's impossible to say, because I, I was actually talking to one of the, the contractors today, and we were talking about a different project, but it's like, you know, we have seen things in the last eight to 12 months that we've never seen before, and so it's been, like, like I alluded to before, a lot of it has been driven by supply chain issues. Like, we redesigned a couple of buildings that, that we literally were finished with to go back and use structural steel instead of bar joists because we couldn't get bar joists. And so, you know, you would call the place that you got those from, and they wouldn't even give you a delivery date. So it's like, okay, well, we can't do that, we have to do something different. So we have done things over the last year to make changes even in our design to accommodate, you know, those kind of things, and so that's affected price. You know, a few months ago, we saw wood just shoot through the roof, and, you know, a piece of plywood was $75. And so it was just crazy how expensive things got, and then wood came back down. I don't know that it's come back down to where it was, and again, anytime in construction that things go crazy high, they will level off, as you know, and they'll come down a little bit, but they never go back to where they were originally. So it's really impossible to say if, if, if it's going to continue to go up, or if it's going to level off, or if it could even go down just a little bit. Because if I had a crystal ball, I would tell all of my clients that they should have built last year before this year, because they could have saved so much money, but I, I don't think it's possible to really say. Can you want to add to that?
Mr. Stanley, we're looking at the same market you look at on construction, and our current projects that we have under construction for city contracts right now, we're constantly working with our contractors. Typically, when we get a job as a city contract, we instruct our contractors to get all of the raw materials, we'll warehouse it, just so we can get the materials on site, so that we can even meet our timelines. And it allows us to control the pricing. We did the same thing when we did the construction on the MPEV. Had we not bought that steel up front, we would have took an additional $125,000 in cost just on structural steel. So we take advantage of that when we can, but we absolutely do, just like private businesses do, we watch that commodities market to see what it's doing. If we see that there's a potential coming down, wood products, we did the same thing. We held off on wood products, knowing that that supply chain was going to come down. Once it came down, then we bought a bunch of wood. So we, we watch it when we oversee a construction project like that, but to say that anybody's got a crystal ball right now, even with the talk of, you know, shutting down an additional pipeline, we know what that's going to do to our fuel costs. And so fuel costs are a big part of construction.
What do you, to switch gears, how many square feet here in this building are unused or underused?
Currently, right now, until we get, right now, we've got several areas that we can develop, but we're holding off on those. So to answer that question honestly, I would say zero if we're going to stay in this building. If we're not going to stay in this building, then I'm probably going to say around 10,000 square feet.
And a lot of it depends on what happens with like arena and other things. We moved parks admin, which used most, most of the second floor, we moved them across the street to the GDS building.
Correct.
And if we do an arena project, and if we don't do an arena project, and we do the Emerald Hardware building, we're going to pull them over into Emerald Hardware, and that would free up this area for future redevelopment if we do the, a, a future arena project. Not knowing that makes it really difficult to say what's vacant and what's not. If we stay here long-term, and if we don't do an arena, and if GDS is still available to us in the long-term, then yes, we do have some space, about 10,000 or 15,000 square feet that we can use for additional development inside this building. Now, that assumes that we're not doing arena, or at least not doing arena in the area where we purchased all the, you know, property to do the arena. But that would also very quickly be utilized by some of the overflow from Sims building, because now where we pushed a lot of people over to Sims, now we're really in position to have to start reabsorbing some of this capacity from Sims because of the crowding that building has. So it's a little bit of push-pull, and Jerry's right, you know, 10,000's a good number right now, but that makes a lot of assumptions
Correct.
That we are not going to build an arena, that we are going to be able to continue to use GDS in the long-term, and that we're going to be able to use this building as an overflow for Sims to bring some of those departments back.
Well, and we'll also have to think about 311 call center. They don't currently have a location. When we talk about changing up the way that utility billings, doing their function with the new system as it comes onboard, that changes the function. So a lot of that square footage is basically, we're holding it. It's, it's where we're going to be, and what do we need to do to stay in front of the needs as we go forward? So it's, it's like your last dollar, you hang on to it till, till you absolutely have to spend it, and that's where we are with square footage here. We're hanging on to it because we can make it work right now, but making it work is not productive as it should be.
Thank you for that. So if you're looking at 100 a square foot on average remodeling this building, that's an $8 million price tag, 80,000 square feet. 100 and a quarter would be 10 million or so, 10, 11 million?
No, that's, that's not correct. You're looking
What is the number?
When you're looking at demolition and, and abatement, you're looking at around $100 a square foot. And then when you remodel and you build back in, when you talk about the FFNE, changing of, and to bring us up to current energy codes, current fire codes, currently this building only has a fire suppression system that services the basement. Once we hit that, those codes kick into place, and we have to become, we have to meet those energy codes that we make everybody else meet. We've got to meet them.
So you're saying we, we could be $200 a square foot on average turnkey to, to bring this building up?
Right now, what we're seeing in the market is around 2 and 1/4 to 2, 250.
It's the same number.
Emerald Hardware here, right?
Yeah, so you're looking at
Okay, so it's the same number as Emerald Hardware?
So by the time you add the demo and the remodel, you're up around 300, 1/4, 300, somewhere around that number.
Okay.
Square foot.
No, I was pretty far south of that, I think, in my understanding. I was seeing costs around, I, I mean, I wouldn't guess at the abatement or the MEP, but, you know, interior finish out without the shell, you know, $60, $70 a square foot, office space, and then looking 30, 40 for some of your higher-end finishes, and maybe like your council chambers, things like that. So not feasible, or feasible to say you could spend 15, 16 million dollars here. I'm not saying that's a good idea, I'm just asking, is that on the table? Can you spend 15 million dollars here and have everything you need?
Not, not, and bring the current energy codes back into compliance, because the MEP does have to be changed out. I'll give, I'll give you a quick example of just what happened this last week. I've got three pumps that sit down there that heat this building. One of the pumps failed. It's a $10,000 repair cost just to repair that pump. City manager asked me, he goes, okay, so I get another 25 years out of that pump. I said, no, 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 you don't. That's a 25-year-old pump that I made work for another year. I can't tell you it's going to run another 25 years. I can't tell you it's going to run another five years. Even, even when we've got a machine shop doing the rebuild, they're only going to say, we'll give you 90 days on this pump. And so to replace that pump and put a new pump in, I'm looking at, that pump's running right around $20,000. So that's just one of the three pumps. If I'm looking at three pumps, I'm already sitting there at, at $60,000 to upgrade just the pumps alone. That doesn't address the piping or any of the fan coils throughout the building.
Till we have resolution on what we're doing with this building, or what we're doing with any other building, we're really doing everything we can, and I know it's putting a hardship on a number of departments, but most probably particularly on Jerry, to minimize or eliminate any costs possible. That touches long-term preventative maintenance, that touches, you know, putting off projects like the pumps until the very, you know, last possible opportunity. But also, it has Jerry looking around corners, and, and, you know, he did a good job last year of, you know, I think we just got lucky really, on the, on the boilers, on bringing one in from the civic center, just because he knew we only had one. Then we have that freeze, and that one wouldn't have kept up with the freeze. So, you know, we're doing the best we can, and we're looking around corners every chance we get, but there are a lot of things that we're not doing that we probably should be doing if we're going to be in this building for a long time. But until we know that, it's, I, I don't think it would be prudent for us to spend that money on large, long-term investments in this building until we know what's going to happen. That's, that's
Sheila, what were those bottom, what were those numbers again on redo?
Um.
The range?
I can go back to my PowerPoint.
Just wanted to work the math problem that I think Cole was teeing up for us.
Yeah, so the renovation costs, and again, this is heavy renovation, and two, about 240 to 270 a square foot, and we're seeing that cost right now in a couple of different projects going on at Emerald College, and they have, they have no site. So it's basically renovate, renovating the building, but there is, there is some demolition and everything in that, in that cost.
So if it was $100 a square foot to demo and abate, then an additional 240, let's just pick the low end of both those numbers?
Right.
That gives you a total square foot cost of 340, times the 80,000 square foot, which equates to $27,200,000. So, I mean, I know we're all talking about
Yeah.
It's estimates, and
Yeah.
But we're never going to have certainty, because there doesn't exist a crystal ball. So I, I just, I appreciate where Councilman Stanley was going with working a number to find out what staying here costs, and, and we haven't started the discussion yet of, well, does all that need to be done, and I have some questions about that, but that brings that, 27 million is, using the low ends, could be more, because those ranges have a, you know, you estimated even possibly more.
And again, that's another one of the benefits of the Emerald Hardware building. If you've walked around it, it is, it's wide open. I mean, you can see from one end to the other. There's not a lot of demolition that would be required over there, so that's a positive.
Okay. Cole?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Cole, do you have anything to add with regard to new construction costs, you know, based off of our, the questions you had at the August meeting, and just?
I think the only other thing I would add is just there, you know, the, the one option that none of us are looking at is any existing buildings that we might try to purchase and move into. So if, if we are all talking about like, what do we want, I think this is a great discussion. I think if we are talking about what is the most cost-effective economical solution, you know, perhaps something across the street that you could buy and move into, that, that has what you need if it was for sale, I think that we could run these numbers on renovation here, new construction somewhere else, or Emerald Hardware, and all end up in the 30 to 40 million dollar range, when you really get there.
That's fair.
The, the benefit of staying here is, you're not married to a $30 million buy-in. You, you build new construction, or you take on the Emerald Hardware project, you better make sure that you've counted your cost and you're ready to take on the full load. Here, you could scale back and be more economical and fix the things that you would have to, maybe not do as much renovation, you know, take it not floor by floor, but, but somewhat in a scope of work that would be more minimal. And so you'd have a little bit more to work with, but all that being said, I don't know that we wouldn't have something else that we could buy and, and relocate to for half the price of, of 40 million. And so like, without that as part of the equation, then I think the conversation we're having is a really good one. We're not talking about what can we afford, we're, we're really talking about what do we want?
Okay, let's talk for a minute about existing buildings, because we did do a presentation on that in September, and, and not to mention that we've spent several years looking at that, and we went all through those existing buildings. So do you have a new building that you want to propose, or was there something about that presentation that you want to bring into this conversation about how to move forward and go back to considering those buildings that we left behind?
I think that there is, you know, a building that's out there that was for sale at a time, and, and, you know, maybe for, for sale again. Like, I obviously haven't pursued that, I know none of us have pursued that, but in the way of having
We have pursued that over the last three years, and, and so that, I didn't, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure that that's accurately stated.
So to, to clarify the, the statement, and I appreciate you wanting to be accurate, I'm not certain that there's not a building for sale that has everything that we need, and is centrally located, and, and, you know, could be a valid option if we were to pursue that.
What would it take to give you that certainty? Because we had a real estate agent who did a full market analysis, and he was here just in September, and he said, this is it, this is everything that's here, you've already seen it as a council, and it was presented to you, and there's nothing else that I know of that would work. So what would it take from your point of view to check that box?
I think where I'm sitting is, I don't know that it's worth pursuing, because I don't know that it's what we want. So like, it's not necessarily part of this conversation in the way of like, what, what are we looking at that we might want to do? And so the benefit of Emerald Hardware is, we already own the building. It's a really cool-looking building. It'd be phenomenal when you're done with it. It's going to be expensive, you know? In the way of looking across the street and, and going back to the Realtor and, and looking at that, I mean, I guess I'm not satisfied that the building was looked at in the way of like, hey, that's not where we want to go, that it had, it had problems with logistics and
You're talking about the one that we have a non, we, we can't talk about publicly?
Right, mhm. So existing tenants and logistical issues, but then if you look at the building itself, I mean, I, I don't know that the, the Realtor said he didn't like the building. I think he didn't like the logistics.
We did some pretty substantial surveys on all of the buildings that we looked at. We had very detailed understandings of acquisition cost, whether we call it tenant improvements or, or renovation costs in each of those buildings. We had some pretty detailed understandings of systems that would need to be replaced or modified, both on the specific building you're talking about, but in all the other ones that we looked at too. There's probably a total There's probably a total of about five or six, depending on what you count in that group. So, we can talk, you know, generically, as to some of those costs, total project cost, can we lease back some of the space? And those are some revenue questions that we haven't really addressed with Emerald Hardware as well, uh, but, uh, you know, same opportunities, opportunities exist. But, to the mayor's point, we did have a lot of, uh, a lot of information about that, and we can obviously, you know, have those conversations, continue those conversations, you know, if that's something...
Well, I mean, I guess, and I'm just thinking, that was a prime time for you to say that, when he was here at the podium, and that conversation was teed up. And so, I, I mean, if you've got specific questions about it, we wanna hear them. But, I'm not hearing specific questions that staff can take action on, I'm just hearing, well, there might be a possibility, and I'm thinking, well, yeah, there might be a possibility for lots of things. There might be a possibility a tornado hits this building tonight, and we're on a whole new track tomorrow morning. But that's just a possibility, and it's not one we can really act on. So, what I, I think what I need as far as direction is specific, specific action. It's like, you came in August, and you said, I've run some numbers, and I think new construction would be cheaper. And so, we, we went, and we've gotten that data, and, and we followed that trail to bring that in front of us with the information that we have today. That was specific, and we could act on it. I'm not hearing something specific that we can act on.
Mayor, I don't mean to be frustrating in the way of, like, we've teed this up for the presentation of the Emerald Hardware building, and, and we're discussing the options of this, and I think they're great. We've gone around this a couple times since I've been with you and on council, and, and we are still saying we're looking at all options, and so, you know, if, if that one particular building that, that I'm referring to or thinking about, um, is, is not for sale, then, like, that checks that box for me. If, if that one particular building is still for sale, then, like, we really don't have current data on how much it would cost and the logistical issues, other than the Realtor who did a great job of standing up and saying, look, I haven't looked at this thing in, you know, several years, and I'm just telling you, this is where I was back then, these are the things that we had. But, in that particular conversation, I didn't hear him say, hey, I reached back out to the owner, I've, I've researched this again, you know, things have changed, anything like that. So, you asked, like, is there anything else you'd like to put out there? And, you know, you're giving me an opportunity to, you know, not have any regrets, so, like, I don't, I don't wanna frustrate you in the, in the way of, like, well, I should've said more back then, I mean, I'm saying it now. And, and if we wanna check that box, I mean, is it for sale, or is it not for sale?
Well, um, just to correct, just to make sure we're accurate, what the broker said was, he hasn't spoken to that person since we stopped negotiating with them, which was about this time last year. So, it wasn't years ago, it was maybe fourteen months, twelve to fourteen months ago. So, I just wanna make sure we're being accurate on that part. And, and it's not about frustration, so, I, I'm not frustrated, I just am saying, we can't move forward on possibilities unless they're more specifically defined. So, it's not about my frustration, which doesn't exist, it's about getting from you what you need in order for us as a body to move forward.
Well, to, to summarize it then, like, I think this has been very helpful in seeing what Emerald Hardware can become. I think that we all understand the, the risk and cost and unknowns in that project, as well as this renovation. And if I were given an opportunity to look at, you know, maybe that one particular building that, that could or could not be for sale, I think that's worth looking at. And so, I would love to be able to check that box, you know, come back to it and say, hey, reach back out, not for sale, not an option. And then, now we're focused on new construction, renovation of existing, or renovation of Emerald Hardware, um, and, and I think that's still where we are today, you know? So, I, I appreciate the presentation. Perhaps I'm frustrated in, in the issue of, like, it's the same, it's the same presentation. It's, it's much better in the way that it looks, and, and I love the architect, so...
I'm confused.
But it's the, it's the same set of numbers, and it's the same math problem, it's the same outlook of where do we go from here? And so, I just, you know, I, I don't mind going back through it again, I definitely don't mind looking at anything else that, that may be on the table. I just wanna make a good decision, so that we really don't look, you know, a year or two from now backwards and say, man, you know, we never even called that guy to see if he wanted to sell that, or, you know, we didn't this, we didn't that.
And, and we did, though, we did, this time last year. And so, that's, I think, maybe where there's, you weren't here, you weren't on the council, so I can understand that you don't feel like you were part of that analysis and journey. I just, I want to accurately state that we did actually do that, and, and we have, I think, presented that information to you. I'm, I'm sad we can't discuss it out here, because then that leaves people going, well, I don't understand, I wish I had more information. But it has been discussed with you, I know, so, you know, while we haven't talked to that person last week, we have discussed in depth how, how we went through all that negotiation, and some of the unique things that happened in that negotiation that made the rest of us feel like that door was closed. And, and there were unique facts there about that, so...
Mayor, I definitely will, will accept your, um, your lead on the deal of, like, if you've knocked on the door, and, and it's not gonna open, then, then we can move forward with that. Uh, that's, that's not where I was, you know, I guess, in my understanding. So, if that's where it is, then let's check the box and move on. If, if there's an opportunity that somebody's home, let's knock on the door again. But, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, good. Thank you for working that dialogue with us. Other, any other questions for Sheila, or about...
No, ma'am.
I've got one question.
Okay.
On a different topic. If, if we go the direction of the Emerald Hardware building, what will it cost? I guess you gotta clear the asbestos from this building, fork can be torn down, is that right?
If you were to demol, do demolition here, yes, you have to have a clean certificate to do demolition.
And what would it cost to demolish this, approximately?
This building here, uh, the original estimates that we received when we first looked at it was anywhere between a million to a million two.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good question.
Oh, I got it.
Any other questions? Concrete failure in this building? I mean, I know we talked about demo and abatement, we talked about rebuilding things back, but I'm not sure that any of those numbers we talked about actually address the structural concrete issues we have in this building.
We, we haven't spent a lot of time, other than what visual checks, uh, to do a structural engineer's report, we'd have to get them in here, uh, what that cost is.
Excuse me, Jerry, could you step up to the microphone? Thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, we haven't stepped out to the point where we've engaged a structural engineer to come in and do a complete evaluation and report. Uh, the information you've received is visual, um, where we have water coming into the basement, uh, where we've seen cracks in walls, um, where we see the failure of the bridge over the entrance on, on the east side, uh, the, uh, front approach, actually, a lot of people see that as cosmetic, but it's not strictly cosmetic, there's some structural issues underneath. Most people don't realize there used to be a fountain in front of City Hall, uh, younger people don't realize it. Instead of removing that fountain, they just built over it. And so, some of that is failing, and that's part of what the front steps and problems are there. We do see we're, uh, we're getting water infiltration on the building on the south side, on the north side, and on the east side.
I noticed that y'all used some wood reinforcement over that bridge, that concrete bridge, so, just trying to remediate pieces falling, I guess.
And that was more for safety than it was, that wood does not support that concrete bridge. But, we actually had chunks of concrete, uh, fall, and, uh, almost a couple of near-misses, and so that was to stop people from getting hurt using that as an entrance.
So, there's a picture that hangs on the wall in the mayor's office, I don't know how long it's been there, um, but it has a fountain, it's the architectural drawing of City Hall, and so I assume it's old, and it has a fountain in front of it.
That's correct.
But, this is the first I've ever heard of there being a fountain in front of City Hall, so that architectural drawing is accurate as to how it was built, I just didn't ever know that.
Yeah, it was there, when we tried to put the additional lighting that we did in front of City Hall about ten years ago, uh, we were trying to actually bore, so we didn't disturb concrete, and every time the boring machine was hitting something, and we went back to the plans, and I wasn't aware it was there either. But, uh, with multiple probes with a boring machine, we confirmed it's still there.
That's interesting. So, uh, one of the questions that I had, how old is existing City Hall if municipal buildings or public use buildings are typically built on a fifty-year lifespan? How old is existing City Hall?
City Hall was built in sixty-six.
So, fifty-five years old?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, I had questions about why gut this building? Like, is there a lower-cost option that, you know, okay, we don't have to gut this building, all we have to do is repair the elevators, or we don't have to gut... I know plumbing is one of the major things here, so, is that what's driving gutting the building? Is that we've got plumbing in all the walls, and so to get to it and replace it, it's gonna be just the best way to go is to gut the building?
Well, that's a big part of it, yes. When we start on plumbing, of course, none of the restrooms work, uh, for a period of time. Plumbing is inside the walls in the building, which means we've gotta break the walls out of the building in order to get to that plumbing. We also have plumbing issues underneath the slab, the video that you saw, uh, about six months ago, where you saw raw sewage bubbling up underneath your big computer systems, uh, that's failure in that cast iron system down there, and those, those sumps failed. Uh, so, yes, the plumbing is a big issue, but in order to work on it, I end up shutting it down.
And does that drive it not being, I mean, I think what, what we all would like to hear is that, well, there's a middle option, there's a way to phase this, we could get another twenty years out of this building if we spend fifteen million dollars over the next five years. You know, that, that's the kind of thing that, okay, well, that feels very palatable to us, but, I'm not sure that I'm hearing that option, just because, how, how do we operate in this building with no bathrooms? Or how do we operate in this building with no elevators, or, I mean, not...
Or heating or air.
Or heating and air, yeah, that's a very important thing.
And, and you've still gotta keep in mind that, in short order, this building is not big enough square-footage-wise for what you need. We can sink a lot of dollars into this building to get this building back up and running, and, and I can assure you, we'll use different means and methods, if that's the direction you tell us to go, we will do the most efficient way we can do it. But understand, there will be points in time where this building will be shut down because it's not environmentally safe for employees to work in that scenario. When we do an asbestos abatement, uh, for instance, there in the basement, we know for a fact, we've got some asbestos to deal with, we have to isolate that area, tent it off, in order to do the abatement. So, that means that IT staff that's currently working down there, they gotta go someplace else. So, it shuts that down. I can't shut down IT. That, that shuts down our city, it's, it's a big problem. So, we, we, when we get to the point where we're having those discussions, I need to make, be able to make you aware. And I, I don't wanna be the little, little boy that cried wolf, but, the reality of it is, when we get to certain situations, it is totally impossible for me to do it and still keep you operational. And, uh, that's the part that you need to keep in mind. Uh, when we get into the plumbing, there'll be a period of time, if we stay in this building, I can remodel from the top down, and then when I get to the basement, then I shut you down. So, the impact, instead of it being months, would be a month, because we gotta saw cut concrete out, jack, jackhammer out all that stuff underneath the structure, then put it all back. Uh, so, to do that demolition and reinstallation, that's about a month's worth of work. We get to the, uh, stuff that we've gotta do as far as the switchgear and stuff that's going on in IT that's from back in the sixties, when that thing goes down, we've got a real problem. So, there's, there's components that we have here that are original to the structure that we've gotten all of the life out of it we can. You know, when I referenced that, that pump that's twenty-five years old, that thing runs twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
I think there's certain superficial things that we can renovate a floor at a time.
Right.
But, if we start touching any of the key systems, whether it's water, wastewater, or, uh, HVAC...
Correct.
Fire suppression, for sure, uh, then we have to hit the basement at the same time, and I don't, I mean, Jerry said we can renovate a floor at a time, I don't, I don't know that that's realistic, and I'm...
Correct.
Don't wanna be throwing Jerry on the bus, I'm just saying, I, I don't know that that's actually an option. I'm sure we can figure out a way to do it, especially if we just replace pipes and, and go with the same old-type systems, maybe we could do it a floor at a time, you know, I'm thinking out loud, and it's probably not the best place to be thinking, so, uh, I mean...
It does present some logistical challenges, major logistical challenges.
Not the least of which is finding a place to go for an undetermined amount of time.
Correct.
We probably need to take a bathroom break before we, I, I think there's a little bit more to this presentation with regard to, how would we begin to pay for anything we decide to do? Whether that's stay here, build new, or do Emerald Hardware? But, are y'all good to take a bio ba, break?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, let's do that, and thank y'all, I'm sorry you've had to stand up that long, but... I don't, in just listening what the three options were, now, I think we need some information with regard to, what are our options for funding sources to cover any of those options? Jared?
Uh, we've got Laura Storres, Chief Financial Officer, Assistant City Manager, to just kind of dump out the bag of all the options that we have available to us to fund any, any type of project like this. Now, there's, none of this says any one, uh, or any specific combination is, is what we're supposed to do, uh, absent a lot of input from City Council, uh, but, but we definitely want to make sure that everyone has an understanding of all the different funding sources, and can ask questions for how we might be able to apply those. So, Laura, take it away.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So, just kinda talking through funding sources for a project of this size, um, there's multiple options that would be available. First, you've got, um, the issuance of general, general obligation bonds, and that would require going to a vote, um, of the citizens, and it passing to then move forward with issuing the general obligation bonds. You have certificates of obligation, um, and those, um, do not require a vote, but there is an advertising, um, period of time, so it's about, it's about al, almost two months, um, in total from start to finish, before you can issue debt for certificates of obligation. You also have, um, tax notes, which are another financing, um, debt issuance, um, they have a shorter timeframe on them. Um, there's also, obviously, cash funding, um, if some, um, was available that could be utilized for a portion of, or all of the project. There's also, um, revenue bonds, and revenue bonds is not something that would be backed by property taxes or anything of that sort, but if a portion of a project like this, um, was going to benefit, um, some of our utilities, since so, potentially water and sewer, um, or drainage, um, they have separate credit ratings, and they have the capability of issuing revenue bonds that are backed by, um, the ratepayers. And then, you know, a final option on that could always be, um, a modification of the scope of a project, so you could potentially modify it, and then utilize one or multiple sources, um, that we just went over as far as a, a financing option.
Questions for Laura about any of that?
Explain the revenue bonds, excuse me, more please.
Okay, so, revenue bonds are normally what we issue when we're doing, um, we're doing a water and sewer project, or potentially a drainage project. And so, those, um, those bonds are backed by a dedicated revenue source that would come from the actual utility. So, for instance, if we were issuing water and sewer revenue bonds, um, and as you know, I know we talked when the architects were up, um, explaining, a good portion of at least that first floor, um, potentially could be utilized by, um, utility billing, and that's the group that is collecting the revenue for our water and sewer, um, services, and our drainage services. And so, we would have the ability if, um, if we so chose to issue revenue bonds that are backed by, um, the water and sewer rate, that our water and sewer... by the water and sewer rate that our water and sewer payers are paying on a monthly basis and/or potentially drainage. And the way those work is depending on the scope of the revenue bond debt issuance, there potentially would need to either be a change in the rate in those areas or those two different enterprise funds do have some potential cash funding, which is another portion of this, and they do have some ability to fund small amounts of debt without much or any impact on their rates. Those two are really our options as far as a revenue bond would be. The property tax, if the property tax was backing any or a portion of this, you would have to look at funding sources, either a general obligation bond, a certificate of obligation, or potentially a tax note.
Thank you.
Other questions? Talk to us about cash. Do we have cash on hand?
So there are, there could potentially be some cash, some excess cash reserves that could come possibly from this last fiscal year as we finish closing out our year-end and we go through our full audit process. Again, we would never recommend utilizing our cash reserves, especially for a project like this. Those cash reserves are set forth in our financial policies that have been adopted and approved by council, and they require a 90-day operating reserve, and that is for time periods where there might be an emergency situation. I don't, well, if there were some emergency repairs related to a City Hall, that might be an eligible situation to dip into reserves. I would not recommend it if you have other options available because anytime those reserves start going below the minimum amount set in our financial policies, it starts affecting our credit rating, which affects how much interest we're paying anytime we issue debt. As far as other cash funding, you know, there could potentially be some cash funding that could be freed up from some of the American Rescue Plan revenue recovery that was approved in the first installment by City Council a few weeks ago. And so as we were trying to replenish some of those losses in the general fund area, potentially some of that could be utilized for a project like this.
Any other questions?
Mayor, thank you. So we're learning together a little bit, and so revenue bonds. Did you find out the percentage times borrowing power for revenue either based on gross or excess? So as an example of water and sewer?
Yes. So our bond covenants require to do an additional debt issuance, we have to have at least 1.25 times revenue coverage. And so there's a very specific formula related to that. It's in the back of our annual financial report and it specifies, so you take all your revenues and then you start backing out like your operating expenses, the things that you're in all of your debt that you've already secured and you're paying on. And your revenue has to be at least 1.25 times the coverage needed to cover that excess debt service for a new debt issuance.
And then does that 1.25 times calculate to a certain borrowing power for that bond?
So...
In the amount of what you would borrow?
So what we, the way we have run our enterprise funds is we have kept, we've kept them fairly lean as well just to meet the current operating requirements, to provide for all outstanding debt service, of course, and then a small amount of cash-funded capital projects each year. And so what we have done historically, anytime we've issued debt out of either of our enterprise funds, and I say either, our airport does not have the capability of issuing revenue bonds, just our water and sewer fund and our drainage fund, we adjust the rate for any needed debt service payments that are coming up. So when you're talking about what's our buying power on it, it would be a calculation of how much debt service was needed on an annual basis. And then we would have to look at what that would translate into as far as a rate change or if council wanted to see about potentially dipping into cash-funded projects, which we would, we would kind of, we would want to possibly steer away from some of that because there are a lot of ongoing projects and a lot of ongoing capital that needs, whether it's repairs, maintenance, or even new extensions or improvements, that need to be funded on an annual basis. And so as you deplete all those cash-funded capital projects, it certainly kind of ties the ability of the enterprise fund to make year after year changes without full-on debt issuances.
But the ability to do that would be something that we address through the water wastewater rate. Were we to utilize cash, available cash resources, we would still have to modify the rate to be able to replenish those funds so that we can continue to do those cash-funded projects.
Yes.
So moving forward in that, because I'm curious, like water and sewer, hypothetically, let's say it ran $80 million, and let's say all our expenses were $60 million, and we ended up with $20 million in excess revenues. Would you be able to calculate off of that, the 1.25, and then would there be a, I'm assuming it's comprehensive, you look at the entire entity as a whole business, and you have to make sure the numbers work for whatever liabilities are outstanding. But I would like to know how many times the borrowing power would be if you had $20 million in excess revenues? Is that what we're addressing in the borrowing power? Or does that just qualify you for a revenue bond because you're 1.25 over?
And you have to show historically that you're meeting that coverage. And the reason for that, especially in this area of the country, our water revenues vary greatly from year to year. So over probably the past six, seven years, we have gone from some of the wettest years to the driest years to the wettest years, and I think we've only had one semi-normal year in about the last six or seven years. And so as rating agencies are looking at historical, and then they also look at your projected coverage going forward, and that determines, and they try to look at somewhat of an average, so they won't, you can't secure debt off of maybe one-time excess revenue that you received in a year. You would have to prove that that's an ongoing thing.
How many years back do they go? Do you know?
So we have to report on, I believe it's 10 years in our financial statements, and that's to meet the debt covenant requirements. And they normally, when we're issuing debt, they normally have us project out about another 10 years to see where the trend is headed. And that's from a gross standpoint on your expense side, and if you know that there's any big, large capital projects that are coming up, they want to see those as well so they can factor that into it.
So you would have to do an entire problem and solve it and go back several years, get an average, project forward, look and see if you've got any, you know, excess revenues. That then has to be factored by the one and a quarter, and as long as you exceed that, then your debt issuance is borrowable at a 1%, 1.5% interest rate?
It depends. We have AAA bond ratings, and so I'm not sure what the interest rates are exactly, but it's probably somewhere close to that, but it would...
Around two...
And they're going up currently as well, so...
And then we, we had a new fee, a new rate, right? And we voted on the tax rate. We didn't necessarily vote on the increase on the fees, but those have been assessed, right? All your new fees have gone into effect.
Yes, and y'all also did vote on the fees through the budget process. That's part of it.
We voted on those.
Yes.
Just wasn't part of the election.
Correct.
So not part of anything that would fail that past?
Yes. That is not subject to any kind of an election process from the citizens.
So we would have that increased fee to calculate in based on, for example, if we just took one year and say last year you had 20 million in excess revenues, you would project with the increased fee, you know, coming up to help offset your cost of increase and...
Yes, and part of that rate increase this year, the majority of that rate increase this year is for an upcoming dedicated debt issuance. And so we would not be able to factor that in. We'd have to show that debt issuance coming on and then the effects of that going forward.
Do I understand that we have certain debt issuances that kind of roll over, meaning we qualify for them in these enterprise funds? And you go and you do the project and you pay the thing off, but because you're already qualified for that amount of money, it almost functions like a line of credit at the bank where it's easy to go and borrow that money again for your next future project?
Well, you have debt capacity.
That's a better way to put it, yeah.
When you have something roll off, that creates debt capacity.
Okay.
And you can either issue debt or you can reduce the rate, or you can continue to collect that revenue towards a future project, like what we eventually will do for Crimwell 2. So as we get closer and closer, and we've been able to push the fee increases associated with Crimwell 2 out with the health of the lake, but also with some program modifications, and Floyd can go into detail on that. But with regard to the debt capacity, I gave you too much information.
No.
As debt rolls off, that creates debt capacity that you can then issue towards other projects that are needed inside the water fund, inside the water wastewater fund, or you can reduce the water rate, or you can apply that rate towards future projects like Crimwell 2.
And kind of piggybacking on that, historically, we have not had a large amount of debt outstanding on our general fund, on our water and sewer fund, on our drainage fund, any of those. And so I believe the next, and don't hold me to this date, but I believe it's 2028, I'm looking at Floyd, but when one of the more recent debt issuances might be rolling off. So we're still...
Ways out.
We're ways out, yeah. But it will happen at some point. Most cities, I think this is where...
Most cities have a significant amount of debt that rolls off every year.
Every year.
That creates debt capacity in almost every fund that they have, both general fund and all the enterprise funds, that gives them the capacity within the existing tax rate to do major capital projects without changing the tax rate or the water rate in this case, since we're talking about a revenue bond.
Yeah.
We're not like that. We've cash-funded things historically.
Yes.
The ability to keep up with the need for cash-funded projects doesn't exist, and that's why we've issued some debt.
Yes.
However, the amount of debt we have is very low relative to any other city, and we don't have it rolling off anytime soon, for the most part.
That is correct.
And if I can clarify, I want to know when you state the amount of debt as related to other cities, are you talking about debt that's based on property taxes or are you talking about debt based on water and sewer?
Yes.
Both.
Both.
So both are very low.
And either one, we're incredibly low as far as debt. I mean, we have next to nothing compared to just about any other city.
Is it fair to ask for a comprehensive understanding of how much debt we currently have just for water and sewer?
Yes, absolutely.
And then what would be the qualifying amount that we would need to have in excess of that to qualify for a revenue bond? And then what would be the borrowing power of that?
We can issue a revenue bond for any amount. Now, we have to qualify. When I say qualify, it's not the qualify that you're talking about. We have to make sure that whatever we are issuing is legitimate water and wastewater expense.
Exactly.
And we're not, so we couldn't cover the entire City Hall project cost with a revenue bond. We could only cover the percentage of City Hall that's represented by the, that's equivalent to the percentage that City Hall services that fund, both directly, like through utility billing, through the call centers, through the management of the meters and the contribution to the general fund that the utility fund makes. But we couldn't do the whole project on a revenue bond.
I understand. And I'm just curious, as kind of learning all the way around it, how much that would be and really being able to put an amount to that. My last question, then, I know Howard has a question, or the mayor can tell us where to go from here, but sales tax excess revenues, do we have an update of how many million that is so far this year to date?
So I'm looking back at Andrew to see if he remembers off the top of his head, but we were up, I believe it was about 16% over the previous year. And I'll let him maybe look and see if he can pull that number up quickly. I apologize, I should have brought my laptop up here, I could have answered a couple more.
Okay. Howard, question?
Yes. City Mayor, Laura, or anybody, what would be your prediction on how much we could borrow that way? Five million? 10 million?
We estimate somewhere between 20 and 30% of any project for City Hall would be eligible for a revenue bond. We would need to do the exact calculations with our bond council to make sure that we are doing it exactly correctly. So a significant percentage of the project might potentially, or would not have to be done through tax rate, could be done through water rate.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
And our first month of collections on sales tax was up about half a million over our budget for the month.
I was just looking, I'm sorry, I was looking for the total year-to-date.
That's...
That is our year-to-date because we just rolled to...
Started October 1st.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then what I'm looking for was total of last year.
Okay. We'll get that for you for sure.
Sorry.
No, it's good. Other questions? Okay, we'll wait on that number. Here it comes.
So we, we had excess sales tax collections, just under $8 million last year. So it was about $7.9 million. So, and that would, you know, and again, as we're working through our year-end audit and putting together our financial statements, we will be able to get council an update on what that final excess, just because that is, that's an amount that is, was over our revenue projections, that doesn't necessarily translate with what our excess reserves will be. So we can get an update for council on that.
And a significant chunk of that was incorporated into this current year's budget for capital projects.
Yes, yes.
So when we were going through the budget, we estimated what we, or we calculated what the estimated available sales tax revenue above budget projections in the last year's budget, allocated that to capital projects for this current year.
Yes, and so we updated sales tax as far as we could through the budget process because we saw those numbers were coming in strong, and then, as Jared mentioned, tried to be able to fund some capital projects in the new year. So again, we'll be able, we'll have a much better idea hopefully in the next couple of months. And I know it feels like we move at a snail pace, but our audit is massive and it just takes some time. But we want to make sure we have council the best information so you all can make good decisions going forward.
Typically, that audit is complete when?
We normally present it to council in February after the year-end of September.
So that would be when we would know, yeah.
Yes, that would be.
Okay.
And I will follow up with council member Stanley on some of the additional requested information. A lot of it's in our financial statements, so I can get it to you and kind of point you in the right direction, we can go from there. Okay?
And could point out even that, you know, at 7.9 million estimated overage, what part of that was allocated into capital spending?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Okay. So I think, council, we just need to give staff some direction on where do we want them to go in bringing us forward a proposal on City Hall? And, you know, there were three options in what Sims Architects brought us today. Cole presented a fourth option, which would be go back around and do a building that we've already looked at. So it's, we've got to give them some direction on how to move forward, and I think they need feedback from us on how to do that. What direction should we go?
What do you think?
Well, I am just looking at 10 years from now. We need more space because we're continuing to grow as a staff. This building's already 55 years old, so I feel like we got five years longer than what it was probably meant to service as. If this was my business, I would not invest millions of dollars, even if we did the lowest range, even if we just did the elevators and the bathrooms and the heating and air. I wouldn't invest that in a building that I know was past its useful lifespan, so... So, you know, pick a number, is that $5 million that you could get by with to keep this building open? Well, open for how long? And so I'm feeling like a good use of our money would be to look long-term at a bigger building, at a building that's not going to have continued repair issues. And it doesn't even mention some of the quality, we can't get good internet signal in this building. I mean, there are just, there are a lot of, if you're here in the building, using it every day, things that create inefficiencies for the staff. And so I would, I would not invest money in this building, even at the lowest of lowest of lowest ends, if we thought we could get by on a $5 million investment. I think that's disruptive to city operations and how we would fix the bathrooms and all of that with people in the building. I think that's daunting. And I just, to me, the obvious solution is to do Amarillo hardware. I don't think the new construction dollars are going to, I just think it's going to be a lot more expensive. And I'm very satisfied with the process that we spent a lot of time working through. We looked at lots of buildings, including the one that council member Stanley mentioned today, and it just, it had problems with it, too. It had existing tenants, it had existing renovations that needed to be done, in addition to the acquisition cost was much higher than the Amarillo hardware building. So to me, running those numbers puts us at a higher price tag. So if what we're looking for is a functional building that will last us long-term, that is the lowest price tag, I think the Amarillo hardware building is that option. And I am getting more and more uncomfortable doing nothing. And every time Jerry talks about the sewage that we had in the basement, or the concrete failure that we're having at the dock, or there are lots of things in this building that any one of them could go wrong, and we can't open the building for a week, a month, six months. I don't want, I don't want that to happen on our watch. So we've been talking about this for four years, and if you're asking me where I think we should go, that's the direction I think we should go.
Thank you.
What do you think?
I happen to agree that we made the decision to go the direction of Amarillo hardware. And after hearing all this for the last hour, hour and a half, I still think that's the direction we need to go. As far as having a City Hall, how to fund it? I'll pitch that question to you next.
Yeah. Well, let's set that question aside for a second, and let's just talk about, because I think that's what we need to do, is we need to give them a direction to go in that they bring us a funding proposal on. And let them sharpen their pencils, and, I mean, it sounded to me like it's not going to be just one thing, probably, you know, if they're going to look at cash, not reserves, but cash. Laura, what's the word? Overages?
Excesses.
Excesses, thank you. It's like, there's an accounting word here that's not coming to my lawyer brain.
I think it's important, there's no such thing as excess cash.
Yes.
Now, we have cash that we realized in excess of what we budgeted. Typically, that's how we fund capital projects. So I just didn't, so.
It's a good correction.
An excess cash in one year is the cash necessary for capital projects in a subsequent year. So we can reallocate, we can reprioritize funds, and so there's always a push-pull anytime we do that.
Yeah. Okay, so concerns? Other comments? Ideas you want out on the table? Now's the time.
I don't have, I don't have any concerns. I've had a sense of urgency for quite some time, and I guess from whenever we started this project, and now we're up on the winter, coming into the winter months again, not knowing what our situation is going to be in regards to City Hall. But I am definitely for moving forward with the Amarillo hardware building. We've had the City Hall project now in the parking lot, if you will, for about the last seven months. And so I'm ready for us to do something. Because I agree, doing nothing is going to set us up for failure, pretty much. So I'm ready to move forward, the quicker the better.
Okay, other thoughts?
Mine hasn't changed. From the day that we made the motion and voted to buy Amarillo hardware, that was a smart decision then, it's a smart decision now, it'll be a smart decision tomorrow. The way that we pay for it, we just have to figure out how that happens. There's not a better alternative. We squeezed that turnip and there wasn't any blood in it. I mean, we squeezed several turnips. There were some really long executive sessions working through all of the minutia and the detail. And there's not a better alternative downtown. There's not. Period.
Okay. Cole, thoughts?
I feel like, you know, things just take shape over time. You can't really go back a year and a half and say, well, I wasn't there, you know, or whatever. So I feel like my time and my energies are better spent in trying to help this council figure out how we pay for parks and rec, you know, salaries and things that we still need, looking down the road, either fixing this building so we can keep it, or helping to pay for what could be a good investment on Amarillo hardware. And so trying to help and keeping our priorities, and taking care of the stuff that we need to take care of that we're already saying we don't have the money for, before we put this in front of them. That is my goal, and that would be my leading. And I feel like that's what I would be better doing than redirecting us to go and try to find another alternative. I don't think it would be worth my time to go look at other buildings, or try to find land, or anything like that. I don't feel like it's a good usage of the staff, if you guys have come far enough along to know that you feel and know that the Amarillo hardware building is a good investment. And so I don't want to be, I don't want to go out and do research for something that I feel like we're not really looking at. I think I'd be better help to try to figure out how do we pay for all this, and in what order.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. City Manager, do you feel like, having heard all of the thoughts of the council, that you now have some direction on how to guide staff?
Yes, ma'am.
On bringing us a proposal?
Yes, ma'am. We'll bring some options on scope, funding, et cetera. And like Cole said, the mix.
Okay.
How do we pay for it?
Okay. All right, we're done with that item, then? Okay. And I want to say thank you to John and Sheila. Thanks, first of all, for being with us for such a long time today, but thanks for summarizing a lot of information and a lot of gathering of that information into something that we could digest, so we appreciate that. Okay, item 1F, requesting future agenda items and reports from the city manager. Anybody have something? Okay, hearing nothing. Let's move to the consent agenda. Anything on item 2 that needs to be pulled for further discussion or questions?
I'd like for item D to be pulled, just so I can be educated on it.
Okay. Anything else? With that, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer, to approve the consent agenda items with the exception of item 2D. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. Okay, let's take up item 2D, if you don't mind, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, pardon me, I'm going to speak right into the microphone. All right, Floyd Hartman is here. Matt Thomas is the project engineer. We also have Assistant City Manager Floyd Hartman to answer any questions you've got. This project is the design, professional engineering services for the design and construction phase related to the Georgia Street project. This is a 2016 general obligation Proposition 1 project. It also goes right in front of Cacique on Georgia, right there. So Cacique is the project that was recently approved through AEDC, and is over just north of the southern 335 Loop. What can we answer for you on that?
Yes, so this will be a five-lane arterial construction related to Georgia in that location.
This is design and construction.
Well, it's the engineering, so it's construction management of the project design and construction management. It's not the actual construction, which will be far more expensive.
About what would the construction be approximately?
Matt Thomas.
You're on that.
Project engineer, city engineer.
Hello, council. Right now, we have an OPC on that project from the engineer we've been negotiating with.
Yeah, but what?
An opinion of probable cost.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, sorry. Right now, they're looking at about $11 million. That includes drainage, analysis of the drainage, the storm sewer, the roadway and everything. It's about a mile and a half of turning what's a two-lane road into a five-lane arterial.
Is all of that included in that bond that was passed in 2016?
This is part of the Proposition 1, this is part of the Proposition 1 bond funding.
Okay. So it's all there to pay for it?
Yes, sir.
When we're ready to pay for it? That's all I got?
Easy enough.
Anything else?
Nope. I think that's it. Thank you. Okay, with that, do we have a motion with regard to item 2D?
Yes, mayor, we do. I move to approve the professional engineering services agreement for the design and construction phase services related to the construction of Georgia Street widening from Stardust Lane to Loop 335, which is RFQ 06-21-JOB-462011 to KSA engineers in the amount of $1,552,000.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith. All those, any further discussion or questions about item 2D? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving to section 3 of our agenda. Item 3A is a public hearing in consideration of a Route 66 emblem on the Independence Water Tower. Mr. City Manager?
Right, mayor, to present this item, we have Emily Kohler, Assistant Director of Planning. It's a great picture, so Emily, take it away.
All right. Good afternoon, council. So you had previously approved amendments to an existing ordinance for names of city-owned property and facilities, and that provided criteria and an approval process for adding an emblem to a water tower. And so for this proposal, we followed that new process, which required submittal of an application and review by the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board for their recommendation to you. The design review considered the color of the tower, color of the emblem, size of the emblem, and other factors appropriate to the size and scale of the water tower itself. So the neighborhood has raised $18,000. That project was led by Historic Sixth on Route 66 Association in partnership with the San Jacinto Neighborhood Association. That was the estimate that we had provided to them. And they're also, they've also created a maintenance fund, which is something that's identified in those new amendments to the ordinance. So the blue base coat will be repainted this fiscal year as part of an existing CIP project. So that's about a million dollars to just do the base coat. And so this emblem will now be bid as part of that process, and it's expected to be completed, hopefully in spring or early summer of 2022. So the design that's being presented to you today with the, it's the Amarillo CVB logo, they contributed to the project financially, so they're excited to be part of this. And the red boots are to help kind of distinguish it, because the emblem will be a little bit smaller. We're limited by the flat surface of the tank, so it's about 15 feet tall by 16 feet wide. But we think the legibility of the kind of iconic 66 font, and then the red boots will make it readable. And so I don't know if you have this image in front of you, if the presentation is in front of you, so you can kind of see how it's going to be oriented down Sixth Street. And they're hoping that this will be a place where people will want to, you know, be a photo-worthy moment there on Sixth Street, that they can do something, that this will be the backdrop. So it's recommended for approval by the Public Arts and Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board, and staff's also recommending, the ordinance requires a fee, but council can waive that fee, and we're recommending a waiver of that because this is a neighborhood plan priority project. So with that, do you have any questions for me?
Howard?
There would be just one image on this.
Yes, one image facing east down Sixth Street, so it's visible as you're driving along Sixth Street to the west.
Good.
And Emily, what was the fee for, again?
It's the application fee, so.
Oh, the application.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions on this side? Okay, I think that's it. Anything else, Emily?
Nope.
Okay. We do have a public hearing on this item, so at this time, we'll open that public hearing for anybody who wishes to speak on, for, or against item 3A. You'll have three minutes at the podium to do so. Please raise your hand if you want to speak. Okay? Yes, Mr. Patel?
Good afternoon, everyone. So this logo, is painted logo, or?
Yes.
Painted.
Jared, you want to?
This will be painted. We'll do it concurrent with a full repaint of the tower. So we have a capital project scheduled to take place to repaint the tower, and at the same time, while that's ongoing, the logo will be painted on the tower.
Painted logo, right? How often we repaint this logo?
Just once.
Once, then?
Correct.
Any guarantee for how many years this paint?
Floyd, or Kyle, one? We typically, and I'll say while he's walking up here, we typically would not go back up and repaint the logo until we repaint the entire tower again.
Correct. Yeah, typically, we're looking for a 20-year life on a surface. Now, that doesn't mean we don't touch it at all in that 20-year time period. And singular colors work best for the maximum time period. So that's a very lofty goal, to get 20 years out of a full-on logo. So, and if I'm going to take a good guess at that, I'd say we're going to get 12 to 15 years out of that logo.
And I would also say, in my 20-ish years doing city management work, I've never touched a logo by itself without doing a tower repainting project, because the mobilization cost is so high for doing it. It would dramatically change the cost of the logo.
So people are just like, we see them daytime only, right? Any lighting, any nighttime?
Do not anticipate changing any lighting that's, if there's not lighting on the tower, we're not adding lighting. The project is just for the painting the tower.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And is that the kind of thing, that lighting could be added at a later time if the neighborhood association asked for that, fundraised for that?
It could be added. It's not impossible. And I don't know on this tower if we have a, I don't think we have a walkway around the edge, so any lighting would need to take place, say, from the ground?
We do have a catwalk.
Okay, so we do have a catwalk.
So it gets a little problematic to light it from underneath, because it creates those shadows, but it's not out of the question, yeah.
But getting a good, even, it has the potential, lighting it from directly under, like a catwalk, of looking like when you hold a flashlight right under your face. And it sounds like I'm making a joke, I'm really not making a joke, it just doesn't give you a good lighting effect. So we would want to, you know, shoot it from somewhere else to light that with a very focused light.
And just like Emily talked about, we play with the surface of the tank so that we don't get distortion of those images.
Good, good questions. Yes, next? Hello, Cassian.
Hello. So I will say, we've been talking pretty closely with the group on Sixth about this project, and we're excited about it. I know that they have our. I know that they have already, they're already prepared to start and maintain a fund that will help maintenance and keep this updated and looking sharp. Lighting has come up a couple of times, and we're also discussing that once it gets up next spring and the trees are filled back out, that the CVB will be actually going out on to Sixth and helping them find a really, I guess, Instagrammable spot and put something out that's fun and interactive so that you can get that and capture it in a picture behind you and post that wherever you'd like. So we love the fact that the 66 emblem, instead of just saying Texas, has the Amarillo and the boots and the recognition, and we really think that's going to draw a lot. You know, Texas overlooks that we have Route 66 a lot of times. You can talk to other Texans, they don't even realize, you know, in other parts of the states that we have it. So we think it's going to be a really neat tool.
Excellent. Thanks for that, and thanks for all the work that you've done in supporting that Neighborhood Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll close this public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3A.
Yes, mayor, I move to waive the application fee and approve the addition of a Route 66 emblem on the Independence Water Tower located in the vicinity of South Independence Street and Southwest Sixth Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this item. Any discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 5-0 vote, and that is just so fun to see a local group work so hard, come up with a good idea to improve their neighborhood, and put their muscles behind it, and then see it happen. So we can't wait. I don't know that we have a ribbon cutting typically when we repaint water towers, but surely there needs to be something.
Yeah, we should.
Kind of party.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Item 3B is consideration of ordinance number 7940. Mr. City Manager?
All right, mayor, we have, make sure I turn it on. Mayor, we have a budget amendment for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the CVB. This is allocating $100,000 pursuant to the conversation that we have with council regarding the ARP funds, so allocating $100,000 from our ARPA allocation, along with amending the budget to include an additional $250,000 from CVB reserves. I think it's also important to note that during COVID, CVB, just like the Civic Center, had a very challenging year. The city continued funding operations at CVB. CVB committed to repaying funds that the city committed to CVB in excess of what was budgeted that year. And I think it's important to note, that was a multi-year planned repayment from CVB to the city, and they've already knocked it all out. So really, big kudos to CVB on managing your project, managing your activities financially. But Cashin's here to answer, present the item and answer any questions you've got. I may have already stole all your thunder, sorry.
Nope, that's good. Rip the Band-Aid off, we did that this year. So what we're basically looking at is going in, we honestly had hoped to get a little bit more of ARPA funds, but we understand that's going to come back in around two, hopefully, and we will submit again. We found, you know, in tourism, there's a lot of spend it all and get the promoting out there, but during COVID, we definitely found how you can be threatened when you don't have reserves. So the hope will be, come around two, that we can hopefully get some of that money back to put back into the reserves. But with actually ripping the Band-Aid off this year and paying all of our debt back and moving forward, we know that we collected quite a bit more than the budget that was projected last year, which we stuck to. But we also know that competition this year is a lot more fierce and kind of going back to Route 66 and those kind of things. International will be opening back up, and we really want to be top of mind for that, too. So going into this year, we had a definite plan, and we think that we need to stick to that plan instead of really pulling that back. So yes, we would like to pull 250,000 out of our reserves. That will leave us with 271,000 and quite a good chunk that will be accessible next year to go in there as well, so. Are there any questions on the items that we have?
I don't think so. Nothing for Cashin? Okay, thanks, Cashin.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion with regard, then, to ordinance 7940?
Yes, mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7940 to amend the Convention and Visitor Bureau 2021-2022 budget.
Second.
Been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number 7940. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3C is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7941. Mr. City Manager?
Right, mayor, this is a rezoning item. We have Planner, Planner 2 Brady Kendrick here to present the item and answer any questions council has. Brady, welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon, mayor and council. This is going to be consideration of ordinance 7941, rezoning of a 4.84 acre tract of unplanted land in Section 183, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways, to change from agricultural district to planned development district 397 for a self-storage facility with general retail district development standards. The vicinity is Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue, and the applicant is Michael Postar and Rick Beemanbow for 87th Street Partners LLC. Adjacent zoning consists of agricultural district to the north and east, land outside the city limits to the west, and multiple family District 1 to the south. Adjacent land uses consist of an apartment complex that is under construction to the south and undeveloped land in all other directions. The applicant is requesting a change in the zoning to construct a self-storage facility. And the initial request submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission by the applicant was to rezone the property to light commercial district, the first base zoning district that allows for self-storage. The Planning and Zoning Commission believed that light commercial zoning was not appropriate for this particular area, and the following are a few of the factors considered in reaching that conclusion. One, the request would not be a logical continuation of existing zoning or development patterns in the immediate area or along this section of Georgia Street. Two, there was a concern about setting a precedent for future requests for commercial zoning, which would be out of character with this area and would allow for more intense incompatible land uses when considering the proximity of the residential areas. And three, because the area is void of light commercial zoning, allowing light commercial at this location could be considered spot zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission believed that a planned development zoning that allowed for general retail uses and a self-storage facility was an appropriate alternative as the following conditions for a planned development were met in this instance. The request for a mini-storage warehouse development that is greater than three acres and the area proposed for rezoning has frontage on a section line arterial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended also that the applicant provide a site plan that conforms to typical general retail standards for the development, which will be shown on the later slide. Regarding the neighborhood unit concept, the recommended development, the recommended plan development with a base zoning of general retail would, in the Planning and Zoning Commission's opinion, conform as this track is near a section line intersection. The Planning and Zoning Commission also noted that similar zoning and development patterns were seen at other section line intersections to the north, with an example being 58th and Georgia, which is pictured on the screen, that features general retail tracks in a similar area in relationship to the intersection. Regarding the future land use and character map, the recommended development type is suburban residential. While the applicant's track would not conform to the just mentioned category, the Planning and Zoning Commission believed that a departure in this instance was appropriate based on the just mentioned neighborhood unit concept and the location of the applicant's track in relation to the intersection of Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue. This location, per the neighborhood unit concept, typically would feature non-residential uses rather than single-family homes. Additionally, as noted, that the immediate area is underserved by retail uses that would be beneficial to surrounding residents. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission believes that the request is a logical continuation of the existing zoning patterns in the area and would not result in any detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. Notices were sent to neighboring property owners as required by state law. As of this meeting, no comments have been received. Considering the previous information, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request for a planned development for a self-storage facility with general retail district development standards with a 6-0 vote. And on your screen, there is the proposed site plan that the applicant has provided as a part of consideration for this planned development. And I'll be happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Brady.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone present who wishes to speak for, on, or against ordinance number 7941 may raise your hand and come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Michael Poster, 3110 Frankfurt Avenue, Lubbock, Texas.
Hi, Michael, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So I've been in the self-storage business for 30 years. I've built 17 storage facilities or owned them, I've built about 25 of them. And so this is one of our standard products that we do. We have them in Lubbock, we have them in Dallas, we're building in Dallas and Austin right now. And we like to make Amarillo one of our homes as well.
Wonderful.
If you have any questions, it's a five-star, very, very nice brick all the way around, self-storage facility. I mean, we really don't have very much like this here in Amarillo, but I think it'll totally be a success.
Any questions, counsel, for Michael? Sorry that you have to sit through such a long meeting in order to come up for your couple of minutes at the podium, but thank you for your patience.
I really like what I've seen, I mean, from the Cowboys this morning.
The Cowboys are awesome, aren't they?
And then all the arts, and then y'all talking about the budgets, I'm like, oh, I already like this. I like what y'all are about.
So what you're saying is it's been good entertainment?
No, I'm just saying, this is my type of city here. So it really is. I've built self-storage facilities in middle Inodes area, San Angelo, and I've got to know all those folks, and so this is right at home for me.
You can tell Mayor Peyton, Mayor Gunter, and Mayor Pope that Amarillo's city council meetings are plenty entertaining, I guess, what you could say. You have firsthand knowledge of that, anyway.
Thank you.
Why don't you move here?
Hey, I like it, put on the hard sale.
So it's on my radar, so.
Okay, good.
We're going to get him paying taxes first, and then we can really get him to move here. Thank you, Michael. Anyone else who wants to comment on this item? Hearing none will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3C, ordinance number 7941.
Yes, mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7941 to approve rezoning of a 4.84 acre tract of unplanted land in Section 183, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey, Randall County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways to change from agricultural district to planned development district 397 for a self-storage facility with general retail district development standards in the vicinity of Georgia Street and Farmers Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number 7941. Do we have any further questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3D is consideration of Resolution Number 110921-3. Mr. City Manager?
Right, mayor, we're going to hand it off to our City Secretary Stephanie Coggins to present the vote and have council canvass the vote for the recent voter approval tax rate election.
Mayor, council, you have a copy of the resolution at your seats. We've received our results back from the counties and will canvass them by reading this resolution, starting about halfway down the page. So we had a special election on the second day of November 2021. In that election, we had 6,583 votes for Proposition A, 8,124 votes against Proposition A. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Amarillo, Texas, that all of the recitals contained in the preamble of this resolution are found to be true and are adopted as findings of fact by this governing body and as part of its judgment. It is further found and determined that the results of the election are as canvassed and tabulated in the preamble hereof and in Exhibit A attached hereto, and a majority of the electors voting at said election voted against Proposition A. The City Council is hereby declared not to be authorized and empowered to ratify a voter approval tax rate on behalf of the city in the amount stated in Proposition A and as more fully set forth in Resolution Number 8-13-21-1, calling the voter approval tax rate election. The City Secretary is hereby authorized and directed to make the appropriate entries of information appearing in the tabulation of precinct results shown in Exhibit A attached hereto in the election register maintained by the city in accordance with provisions of Section 67.006 of the Election Code. That said election was duly called, that notice of said election was given and held in accordance with law, and that said election and the returns thereof have been duly canvassed by the City Council. That said election against Proposition A received a majority of the votes cast, introduced and passed by City Council of the City of Amarillo, Texas on this ninth day of November 2021.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions for Stephanie?
No, thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate that presentation, very well done.
At this time, then, we entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 11-09-21-3 to canvass the returns and declare the results of the special election held on November 2nd, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Stanley to approve Resolution 110921-3, canvassing the returns from the November 2, 2021 election. Any further questions on that motion? Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3E is consideration of Resolution 110921-4. Mr. City Manager?
We're just going to keep City Secretary Stephanie Coggins near the microphone because she'll have items E and F, which are considering resolutions to vote for members of the Randall and Potter County Appraisal District Boards, Potter County first, and then after we do item G, she's also going to have a very extensive item H, which we will move through in a very workman-like manner, but it is a substantial agenda item as well. Stephanie?
Thank you. So if you'll recall, back in our second October meeting, we had to nominate people to serve on the boards for Potter and Randall County appraisal districts. Today, we'll have two different resolutions. So this first one, as Mr. Miller said, is for Potter County ballot. So on this next slide, you'll see the five candidates that are on the ballot that was sent to us by PRAD. The four highlighted in orange are the four that you nominated during that October meeting. So we have 665 votes to cast as the City of Amarillo. You can vote equally among all five if you'd like to, and that would be 133 votes apiece. If for some reason you wanted to vote for just those that we nominated, that would be 166 votes for three of your candidates and 167 for one of them. Be happy to answer any questions on this process, and as a reminder, this is a two-year appointment once they're elected.
But we do these appointments every year, like the way their board is structured? They have people that roll off?
Every two years, actually.
Okay.
And I don't know, and I'd have to find out, but I can get you some information on their appointment process if they have someone resign early, so.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Do we have a motion with regard to this, then?
Yes, mayor, we do. I move to approve Resolution Number 11-9-21-4 by acclamation for the individuals listed, which would be Kay Ledbetter, Zachary Plummer, Cindy Spinell, and Mitzi Wade, dedicating all 665 votes to those individuals for the Potter County Appraisal District Board.
By acclamation, does that mean to be divided equally among the five?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So on that, we've got one extra vote.
Okay.
Because it doesn't round evenly by four. Did you want to include John Coffey in your motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, I was like, well, it should.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I don't, I guess I just overlooked his name since he wasn't highlighted.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
Okay, so to clarify, the motion includes all five candidates?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to cast our 665 votes equally among the five candidates for the Potter County Appraisal District. Any discussions or questions about that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3F is consideration of Resolution Number 110921-5. Item 3F is consideration of Resolution Number 110921-5. Mr. City Manager?
Right, Mayor, this is same item, just for Randall County. Stephanie, take it away.
Okay, so for Randall County, the ballot included six individuals. The three highlighted, Misty Clements, Landon Moreland, and Joe Shane, are the three that council nominated back in October. The only thing on this one is you can cast votes for up to five individuals. And so if you wanted to pick five from the list and split those evenly, we would do 128 votes to the five you select.
Okay, questions for Stephanie? Okay, if there's no questions, do we have a motion?
Okay, so Mayor, does anyone know either Bob Lindsey, or Robin Patterson, or Diane Thurmond? Because the way I understood it, we have to have five individuals, is that correct?
You do. Now, Mayor Pro Tem, another option is that you could take your 640 votes in this case, and you could divide them between your three that you nominated. So that's another option. If you did that, it would be 213 votes for two and 214 votes for one person.
Okay.
I like that idea.
Okay. Okay, all right, so...
Motion, see if you get a second.
All right, sounds good. Okay, so Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 11-09-21-5 for the following members, Misty Clements, Landon Moreland, and Joe Shane, for the Randall County Appraisal District Board allocating the 640 votes equally to each one of those individuals.
Would you like to do 214 to one of the three, and then 213 to the other two? That's really what we need.
That would work for me, since I wasn't doing the math up here.
So if I was to throw a 214, do you want to do, Misty Clements is first, Landon Moreland is second, Joe Shane is third, we just need to know which one to get 214 on, and probably need to include it in the motion.
We could do it to Misty Clements.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith, to allocate our 640 votes between Misty Clements, Landon Moreland, and Joe Shane, with Ms. Clements receiving the extra vote when that's divided by three. Any discussions or questions about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes with a five-oh vote. Item 3G is to discuss and approve the list that you have in front of you for the Partners for Development Progress Advisory Committee. In looking at the list, Lloyd Brown has agreed to serve as the chair for this committee, and you'll see there are lots of different names on there with different perspectives. We were, I requested that council send names, and I got names from some of you, and you'll see many of those people represented on this list. But the goal, obviously, is to not just have council perspective, or what, we're trying to create a committee that represents the entire city. So, young people, old people, people with ideas about how to make our city more dense, people with ideas from the development community who are experienced in the challenges in growing and building new neighborhoods, people from all parts of the city, men, women, all of that. So we've created a very diverse list here and have reached out. You can see that, really, an excellent response from all of the names that you submitted to this committee, and only, one of the people that didn't respond, I found out today, has moved, so that's why we didn't hear back from her. But really, only had one person decline, another person who is gonna let somebody else from their organization serve in that spot. So, really, we just wanted a little feedback from this, and then they need to get started working, so we need to approve this list. Any thoughts?
So you just want to know from us if this is an acceptable list for staff to move forward on?
Yes.
So yes, I'm good with this list.
So can we do it in the form of a motion?
Oh, we certainly can. Okay, I move to approve the Partners for Development Progress Citizens Advisory Committee to guide the review and evaluation of the city's development policies with a focus on long-range vision, planning, process efficiency, and funding of public improvements.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve this list of citizens to serve on an advisory committee for refining our development process and walking through that with staff. So, any discussion or questions about that motion? I do see that we have one person whose name is on this list, who's in the chamber with us, so, Alan, thank you for agreeing to serve on this committee. I think it will be an interesting group of people, as well as a very productive thing for our city. Okay, with that, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item passes with a five-oh vote. And I want to thank Andrew and Floyd, and they've done a lot of work on putting that list together, too, and they have a lot of work in front of them in walking through the process with the committee. Okay, the moment we've all been waiting for. Board and commission appointments, and Stephanie's gonna come back to the podium and walk us through that. I will say, while she's coming to the podium, this will be the fifth time that Howard and Frida and Eddie and I have walked through this process, and this is Cole's first time to go through it with us, but a lot of work on staff's part goes into preparing the applications, as well as how they come to council, so that we can see people's applications and work through them efficiently, and a lot of work's been done in the past. You know, I can't help but think about Jan Sanders and Frances Hibbs as we do this, because they did so much work in every year improving this process, and I can say, having worked through the packet this year, substantial difference in what it was the first year we sat down to do this. And, and we've seen an increase in applications every single year of doing this. So thank you to our media partners who push out that this, that we do the board and commission appointments. Thank you to every citizen who applied, took the time to fill out applications. Thank you to our staff, especially the city secretary's staff, to Johnny and to Stephanie for their work. But, you know, this is a tremendous amount of paper and information that gets handled, and we just want to start off by being grateful and telling you how much we appreciate the work that you do. Okay, yes, go ahead.
On that note, just to put a pin on what you were just saying, I didn't think about it till you said it. In 2017, y'all's first handful of months, before we got to November, you were making board and commission appointments, two or three boards, every single council meeting.
Every single meeting, yes.
And that November is when we standardized board and commission appointments, so that you only did it once a year, with the exception of those odd, unique situations where quorums were being unable to be made because we lost some members. So that was a big move on council's part to direct that, and then from that point on, staff, you mentioned Jan and Frances, and now Stephanie, have incrementally made improvements every single year, with a big step again this year.
Thank you.
So thanks for your work.
Well, and hopefully, we've given you some tools today to help make this an efficient process for you. We do have our board liaisons here as well, and big thank you to them for the work that they put in and the endless emails I sent them through this process, getting us information. So if you have specific questions, we can bring them up to the podium to help answer them. Just to note, I know we gave you packets a couple of weeks ago and gave you some fun reading. During the break, we also put this on your dais, which is just, we're gonna call it a guide for motions. It's something you can use if you want to, you don't have to, but it's just to help you out on the motions. And then we've got some attendance notes, and so I'll refer to those as we get to boards where we may have a note on attendance. So I will just open up each of these boards on your workbook and then give you any notes, because this is kind of a fluid process, and so even through yesterday and today, we've had a couple changes, and so I'll just notate anything there and then turn it over and let y'all work through the appointments for each board. So our first board is Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. I think you're all familiar with this one. We have two spots that are coming up for appointments on this one. Scott Bentley is eligible to serve again, and he has indicated his willingness to do so. Brian Heinrich, if I'm saying that correctly, he would actually not be eligible to serve again. It's a state rule, you can't serve for more than six years on the EDC board. And so if appointed, we would have to find a new appointment in June of next year, so...
Okay.
So can I make a statement real quick?
Sure.
As we go through these boards, I want to just clarify, if we're still kind of interested in doing this, is that we, to allow more people to serve, that actually, we were kind of imposing sort of a two-term limit on most of these boards, so if they came up the second term, we would go ahead and probably replace them with somebody new onto that board. Is that still, everybody's still okay with that?
Thoughts on that? Cole?
So if we had somebody who said, hey, I'm still willing to serve, they'd already served two terms.
They don't.
You, you wouldn't allow them to serve a third?
That's right.
And as a group, we're wholly agreeing to that.
Well, we're saying that's generally a policy that we have put into place in the last couple of years, and so I think...
There's been a few exceptions, because we really didn't have an alternative. When there's plenty of alternatives...
Yes.
We just, as a general rule, have said, okay, no.
And that's all been communicated to those that have served?
Or it will be. I mean, I can't speak for every liaison for how they've communicated to their...
And that's a policy that predates this council, too, and this council picked it up and just kept going with it.
And I'll let Mr. Miller add to this. We had changed the municipal code to take that out, so that it's not a rule anymore. It's more of a policy, because some boards benefit from that institutional knowledge, but overall, the policy had been two-term limits.
Okay, all right, you ready for the motion?
Sure, let's get started.
I'm ready to get started. Okay, I move to reappoint Scott Bentley for a three-year term to begin January 1st, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Scott Bentley to a second term. All of those, any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes with a five-oh vote.
I move to appoint Adrian Meander for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
I like that. Second, I like it.
It's been moved and moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Dr. Sauer, to appoint Adrian Meander. I think his packet might have come in late. Does everyone have his information or know him personally? Okay.
I met him whenever he was, was he running for school board or running for...
He ran for the Amarillo College Board of Regents.
And that's where I kind of got to know him. He's a great...
He's a sharp guy.
Yeah, very sharp.
Okay. Any discussion, then, further discussion about Adrian? All those in favor of Adrian, that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a five-oh vote.
Mayor, if I move too fast, tell me.
Well, okay, okay. And I just want to make sure, yeah, I answered my own question. Okay, Stephanie?
If I move, yeah, if I move too fast, just let me know.
Okay.
My feelings will not be hurt. I can move fast.
Okay, Steph.
So the next board in your packet is the Parks and Recreation Board. It's an 11-member board, they serve three-year terms. There are some members on your attendance notes, so I'd ask you just to look at that and consider that. And on this one, we had received notice after we first gave this to you, that John Ingerson had asked not to serve another term. So he's been here a little over five years on the board, we appreciate his service, but we'll need a new appointment for his upcoming term.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie?
No.
I had one question, I just wanted to, I don't know Terry Price, but just looking at this, as far as a balance, to me, it looked like we had one, one woman on a board of 12 people. Is that...
I believe it's...
Terry is a female? Okay, so we have two women on a board of 12 people.
Yes, Ms. Price actually works for XL Energy.
Okay.
And you know her.
Okay, now, I do, now, I do place that, thank you. I just needed a little context, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mayor, I move to reappoint Robert Altman for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Robert Altman. Any discussion or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
And Mayor, I move to appoint Shelby Massey for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Powell and seconded by Dr. Sauer to appoint Shelby Massey. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there anything there that you want to visit council as far as people who are not holding up their attendance? And life happens, so there's no judgment or shame, but in particular, the Parks and Rec Board is a board that has a lot of people willing to serve on it. So let's pause for a second and just, do we need to address, you know, enforcing the attendance policy, being grateful for the time they were able to serve? Is there any concern with what you're looking at there on attendance?
I'd be concerned with my attendance.
It might be under your script.
Do we get to grade your paper?
Well, that will be rectified whenever we go to the next board.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that, just looking at this, sort of understand, you know, for some of the individuals, so, I mean, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, I don't need any discussion about it.
Michael, or Stephanie, either one of you, do we have a, does it vary from board to board, from liaison to liaison, how you keep in contact with people who are not meeting that standard? Like, I wonder if these guys even know, and how often does Parks and Rec meet?
Oh, I bet they know. I bet they're, I bet life is just getting in the way.
Yeah, and life does that.
Yeah, and in most circumstances, there were extenuating circumstances as to why individuals weren't able to meet those attendance requirements, whether it was sickness or other things that prevented it. And we do meet once a month as a full board. We also do meet with our subcommittees once a month, aside from the board, so, but most of the attendance is due to other unforeseen issues, so...
Okay. Moving on?
Yes, moving on.
Okay. All right, Stephanie?
Okay, our next board is the Amarillo Local Government Corporation. We have five appointments needed for this board. It's a seven-member board with three-year terms. You'll see on your packet, there are four there that are ending, and then Paul Matney turned in his resignation to the board. And so we need, on one of these motions, to appoint someone to fill his unexpired term, which would end December 31st, 2023.
Okay. Let's start first by visiting with our council members and just seeing if they're both willing to continue serving. Howard? Okay, Eddie?
So this is where this comes in. I would really like to consider, if Cole will do it, to take my position. I've, I, like, those Wednesdays, it's also the Wednesday, it's not always the Wednesday, but it is a Wednesday, and I've only got, that's really my, one of my best days to work in my own office, and so giving up two Wednesdays at some point in time during the day, a month, I would really prefer to focus on Parks and Recreations, and I think it'd be a really good opportunity for Cole to get an opportunity to see how the LGC works. I think it'd be a great, it'd be a great board to be on.
Cole, we need to onboard you to some things. Is that something you'd be willing to do?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that'd be a good fit, and I'd like to serve in that capacity, so I would accept that, if the council's good with it.
Okay.
Well, then I move for, to appoint Cole Stanley for a three-year term, beginning in January 1, 2022, in, in my place.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Second from Howard. Any discussion other than what we've had? All those in favor... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes with a five-o vote. Okay. Thank you, Cole, for being willing to serve.
Yeah. Thank you. I do have a question if, before we move on. William Biggs, to make sure I'm understanding, started in 2015?
Yeah.
Does he have consecutive years?
This would be one that would, we would roll off.
Uh huh.
So we would actually have two nominations on this?
That would be a two, that would be two terms for Mr. Biggs. So yes, if you wanted to, you could appoint instead of reappoint.
I'd like to consider appoint, I'd like to move to appoint Gary Jennings in that position.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
My second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Gary Jennings, and we're talking about the position that William Biggs has very loyally served in. We appreciate-
He's done a great job.
He's done a great job.
I mean, he's done a really great job.
We appreciate those six years. And, but now, I think there's a long list of people here willing to serve. So I think we're just following through on that policy that we've tried to carry forward on. So the motion is for Gary Jennings. Any discussion or questions about that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So Mr. Jennings will be replacing Mr. Biggs.
And I would also-
Mayor, I move to reappoint Howard Smith for a three-year term, beginning January 1, 2022.
Can we also just add, go ahead and add Alfonso Zambrano to that, too?
Yeah. I was going to do a separate motion for him.
Are they going to have to be separate?
They don't have to be.
However you want to do them, if you want to combine, you can.
I'll do it separate.
She wants to do them separate.
Okay. Then we'll do that.
Do you want to second the one for Howard?
Sure. Second.
Yeah. I'm, I'm doing it for people watching, too, so they don't get too confused.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns about Howard serving? All those in-
Oh, should we?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. That passes with a five-o vote. Eddie, do you have a motion or-
Thank you, Councilmember Sauer. Now, I'll, I'll, I move- No, not a problem. I move to reappoint Alfonso Zambrano for a three-year term, beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Alfonso Zambrano. Any questions or discussion about that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote. We've got one more spot.
I move to appoint Tom Sherlin to fill Paul Matney's unexpired term, beginning immediately.
I don't see that he's applied. So have you talked to him about it?
I have spoken with him.
Okay. Waiting on a second. If we don't have a second for that motion, does someone else have a motion?
Give me just a moment. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the list of names here. I'm trying to look at the revised list that we have.
I would move, um, to appoint Megan. I'm not sure how to say her last name.
Zach Katin?
Uh huh. Thank you. So I would make a motion to appoint Megan.
Zach Katin? Okay. I will second that motion.
Any discussion or questions about Megan? Again, I'd like to see balance on there with regard to diversity and, okay, male, female. All those in favor of Megan, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Well, I'm just looking at the list of the applications that we did receive. So that's what I was going by on here. Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay. So does that get us where we need to be on LGC, Stephanie?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next board.
Next is Planning and Zoning Commission. Just a note on your packet, we had this marked as alternates, that there are no alternates on PNC. So it's a seven-member board with three-year terms. One other note I have, we heard back from Mr. Pedro Lemus, and he is willing to serve again, and so you might mark that on your pages.
And I think this would also be another one where we've got someone with, that's completed two terms.
So, um, starting with Mr. Dick Ford, I would move to appoint Cindy Bula for a three-year term, beginning January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Cindy Bula in Dick Ford's position.
Yes.
Any discussions or question about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That passes with a five-o vote.
And I would move to reappoint Jason Alt for a three-year term, beginning January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jason Alt for a second three-year term. Any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. That motion will pass with a five-o vote. The last spot.
Okay. Now, is Mr., so he is Mr. Lemus? I thought I read somewhere where, let me look, let me look at my notes really quick here.
And, and I had a question just while she's doing that on, I think she's got a timeframe question. We did confirm that he's willing to serve?
He is willing to serve again.
Yeah. I see it in my notes now.
Okay.
I will say this. I've talked to Jeff Perkins, who, his dad is a long, was a longtime builder here, and Jeff has done building also. I think he might be a good addition to that board. So I, I'd nominate Jeff Perkins. And I've talked to him. He's, his application was on several other of these, and I think he'd be a great addition.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion for Jeff Perkins to serve in the position that Pedro Lemus has formerly served in, and it's been seconded. Any questions or discussion about it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That motion passes with a five-o vote. Okay. Stephanie?
Okay. Our Amarillo Hospital District Board of Managers is a seven-member board with two-year terms. You've got four appointments coming up for, for this board. Excuse me. I don't have any other comments on this board, Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Okay. Yes. Mayor, I move to, let me check this just a moment. I move to reappoint William Biggs for a two-year term, beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
So can we discuss that one?
Yeah. We can.
Yes. So it's been moved and seconded to reappoint William Biggs. Cole, you have a comment?
That'd be his third.
I think it's because of his knowledge in, go ahead.
I'll let Laura speak to this, but I believe this is one of the boards where they-
Yeah. I think this is one of those boards.
Some of that institutional knowledge is important.
Thank you.
So this is one of our boards that there is a great need for long-term institutional knowledge related to it. It's a fairly complex board with transactions that occurred many, many years ago, and it takes several years to get our board members up to a full understanding of the information related to this board. So I would certainly honor any of council's wishes on this, but would recommend, from a staff point, that if we have members that are willing to serve more than a two, more than their two terms, that this is a board that I think that would be appropriate with.
Okay.
So greatly appreciate that. I, I know, you know, Dick Ford on the previous planning and zoning has a lot of intricate knowledge about that, has been willing to serve. And, you know, we, we didn't reappoint him, even though he requested it. And on this one, I do see Doug Albrock down there, the fantastic physician doctor, you know. What, what would be the difference in those two scenarios?
I think the complexity, I mean, I'll let you speak to it, Laura, but I think the complexity between those two boards is, is different, drastically different.
Absolutely. And, and again, I don't have a whole lot of experience with planning and zoning, but the Amarillo Hospital District, it has a lot of legacy knowledge, and there are agreements that are in place that, I will say, in Dr. Biggs's, in, in his position in particular, he was on other sides of some of those agreements that were put in place before these transactions occurred, and brings a whole outside set of knowledge to the overall transactions that are still taking place between the hospital district and one of our local hospitals that we have indigent care agreements established with. And those are long-term agreements that have been in place since 1996, and they go on until 2036. And I will say, and I'm, I'm getting maybe a little off right here, but even the transition between Dean Frigo as CFO, to Michelle Bonner as CFO, to now me as CFO, I have seen some of the, the long-term knowledge has, they've done their best to continue conveying that year after year, but it does break down a little bit over time. And I think some of this institutional knowledge is imperative on this board. And this actually is a taxing entity, and if you'll remember from our budget discussions, these are, there are some big changes that will be coming in the next 10 to 20 years, where this, this entity will have to start assessing a tax rate again, and will have to work with the state legislators. And this is one that I think there, there, again, would be a lot of benefit, having more of that institutional knowledge retained.
Dean and Michelle continue to serve on the board, which I think is really telling, because it's been, how many years since Dean retired?
It's probably-
Maybe 10 years.
Maybe. Yes. Maybe about.
And, and so just, they understand the importance of having that knowledge, that both Michelle and Dean are retired, but yet they continue to serve as citizens on that board, because they understand.
And it's, it's been a huge benefit to the board, having those two on it. And we've had some transactions going on with one of our local hospitals related to this indigent care agreement, and Dr. Biggs has been key in kind of working through and navigating some of that, because he has seen various sides of those transactions over his career.
It's a good question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've forgotten now, we have, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all gonna have to keep up with that. Help me. So we have a motion to reappoint Dr. Biggs? Do we have a second? Did we have a second? Yes. Okay. So motion is second to reappoint Dr. Biggs. We had conversation about it. Is there more conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Dean Frigo for a two-year term, beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Dean Frigo. Any questions or discussion about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with the five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Weston Wright for a two-year term, beginning on January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Wes Wright. Any discussions or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Rodney Young for a two-year term, beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Dr. Young for a two-year term. Any conversation or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That passes with the five, five-o vote. Okay. Stephanie?
Okay. Your next committee is the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. This is a five-member term with three years. You have two positions up for potential reappointment, and then one vacancy position.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Allison Ramos-Pierce for a three-year term, beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Ally Ramos, and it's so fun that we know her now.
I know.
Because she's-
It is.
Put herself out there to run for a council position. So any discussion or questions about Ally serving on that committee? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. She passes with a five-o vote.
So did she take an unfilled position?
No. She's being reappointed. But why is her term so short?
Did she originally take an unfilled position?
No. It's two years. Oh. I see what you're saying. Maybe she did.
She began serving in 2020, so, I mean, we just put her on this year. See, we have several that were unfilled.
Do I have the terms right? Is it three or two years?
No. She, she should be two years. The vacancy was a replacement for, and was a one-year term.
Okay.
So that is expired next.
So Ally Ramos is not, her term is not ending this December?
I believe so. But that could be-
Okay. Well, we approved her, so y'all double-check on what the terms are. And if her term ended, we've reappointed her.
Right.
If not, then we, then, then let us, then we have to reconsider her next year.
I thought we appointed her.
Just last year.
Just last year.
We will double-check on that.
Okay.
And I may be confused, because she was, she's, she did her second term, so.
Hmm. Because I think it's a one-year term, right? It's a one-year term?
It says three.
Yeah. It's a three-year term.
But either way, her dates show that she's fulfilling somebody else's, the end of somebody else's term.
Yeah. The same way with James.
Uh huh.
They both look like they were fulfilling somebody else's term.
And we'll check on that term length. Most of your boards and commissions are three years, unless state statute or one of our resolutions or ordinances says different.
Okay.
So we'll check on this.[1623.61]
If you are reappointing Hugh, Dr. Allen and James, and then go to vacancy and verify Allen and James and make sure we can get back to you through who then, whether or not they're going to continue finishing out their existing term or whether they're going to point to three-year terms today. So we'll clarify that before you, I mean, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, making some assumptions about Mr. Plener, so.
Okay, all right. You want me to continue?
Anything to add, Stephanie?
I was gonna say, you could potentially make a motion to reappoint them at the end of their current term, if you wanted to do that. But if it's a year out, you may not want to do that.
Seems like that might be confusing for you guys to remember.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're up to it, but I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to reappoint James Clemmer for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint James Clemmer for a term on the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. We've got one more spot there.
So I don't know. Does someone know the other four individuals on here?
No. Marita, do you?
I don't personally, but I did make a recommendation.
And, okay, I don't have it, I don't see it on here. I don't see a recommendation, so maybe, if we gave you this list...
It is Terry Gunrich.
Uh huh, okay. I will not do as good a job of pronouncing that as you did.
Okay. Mayor, I move to appoint Terry Gunrich for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Terry to a term on the Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. We look forward to learning how to actually say her name.
That is not fair.
And anybody have questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll add Terry to that board. Okay, Stephanie?
Okay, next on your packet is the Amarillo Area Public Health Board. I did want to note on this one, and it was on your memo on Friday, Jim Womack applied to this board, so if you'll add his name to your list. And the staff recommendation is that Kevin Hawkins would be reappointed to continue serving due to the industry he's in and having that reach with the food industry. And then just a note on the vacancy for the jurisdictions under 3,000, that has been filled by Mike Campbell out of Timber Creek.
Okay. Just Casey's in the room, I think. Casey, are there any other people on this board that have restaurant or food prep industry ties? So Kevin is the only one.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Kevin Hawkins for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Kevin Hawkins to another term. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Stephanie?
Okay, next up is the Amarillo Potter Events Venue District Board. This one has positions serving that Amarillo appoints and also Potter County. We have three positions up for appointment. All three are willing to serve again and recommended by staff for such.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Deepak Patel for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Deepak to another term. Mr. Patel, we appreciate your service on this board. Thank you for being willing to do it again. Yeah.
Did you, can I ask him, did you fill in, did you fill in an unexpired term?
No.
Okay. See, this is another one. Did you just, did you just start this past year? Or have you been on it for two years?
No, for last year.
This is a two-year board, so he would have served 2020 and 2021. So this is one of our ones that's not three. We're trying to throw curveballs your way today.
Tricky.
Oh, yes, the very first day of 2020.
Yeah, I, okay, I get it. It's my bad. I'm sorry. It's the...
I forgot to do that.
Okay, all those in favor of appointing Deepak Patel, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Vance Reed for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Vance Reed. Any discussion or questions about that nomination? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Alberto Rios for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Alberto to another term. Any discussion or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Steph?
Okay, our next board is the Animal Management and Welfare Advisory Board. This is a five-member board that serves three-year terms. Just to note on this, we have four appointments today. Stacy Grant, Christopher Rampelmeyer, Charlie Sanchez, and Eddie Sauer. I also want to define on this board so that you know, on special requirements of those five, the Humane Society may recommend up to two, and the Texas Tech Vet School may recommend up to one. Bethany Schilling, who was appointed earlier this year, was appointed at the recommendation of the vet school. And then, as noted, Stacy and Christopher were recommended by the Humane Society originally. There is one member on this board that's on your attendance list, so I would point that out to you. And then I would also let you know on behalf of Victoria, the staff liaison, that Christopher Rampelmeyer, we haven't been able to get a confirmation that he's willing to serve again, but I know staff would like to have him serve again if he's willing.
Okay, so, I'll just start at the top and then we'll walk our way down. Mayor, I move to reappoint Charlie Sanchez Sanchez for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Charlie Sanchez. Any discussion or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Dr. Eddie Sauer for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Dr. Sauer. Any discussion or questions? Eddie, you're willing?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay, now...
A name on the list that's really interesting to me.
Is David, is David Martinez, he works for AISD, right? Is that, is that, oh, I guess I could look too. I got my handy little book here.
Y'all talking about Chris?
No, David, Mr. David Martinez.
He does work right at us, too.
Does he? Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I thought Sandra McCart was an interesting name also. I'm gonna make the motion for Christopher Rampelmeyer to continue to serve.
Okay.
And part of that is just a number of meetings that we've had with APHS over the last four years in working through issues at the, at the shelter. Chris has a lot of institutional knowledge and he is a very steady, good, reasonable partner from that group. And sometimes in this situation, topics can, emotions can run high. And I have found Chris to be passionate about the topic, but yet all of his conversation about it is productive. I think there are still some changes that I'm seeing as far as what Victoria is doing at the shelter, the partnership with Texas Tech, new things that we are bringing on, opening the surgery center, and still figuring out how we manage the excess pet population that we have, that I think there would be a lot of advantage to continuing some of that historic leadership that Chris has brought through APHS on the animal management welfare. But I mean, Eddie, I would be really curious to know...
I think he's one of the most level-headed guys that I've, that I've dealt with concerning animal management and welfare. I think he's handled himself, yes, he is passionate, but he's very level-headed. He handles, he thinks through the situations well, he answers well, he's, he looks at both sides. I've learned an awful lot sitting on the board with him, just understanding what, knowing what he has actually navigated would maybe a good word.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, there's been a lot.
Because he's navigated all the way, he's navigated through three different...
Directors there, yeah.
Let's hope it's just three.
It may be more. I mean, how long was Richard?
My keynote's a little, I think staff and myself would also be really comfortable recommending him.
Even though he has exceeded the...
He has too.
Uh huh.
I think, I think we need...
Okay, I second the motion.
Mayor, just a little history on the APHS nominations. Per our agreement with APHS, they can make two nominations to the board. Many times, council has appointed both of their nominations to the board. However, there's not a recommendation, I mean, there's not a requirement to do so. Council can appoint both, one or none of any APHS nominations. However, because of that relationship, when they make those nominations, if there's somebody who has served a long tenure, and if they have a productive, like the mayor was saying, ability to work on behalf of animals in this area, they have been nominated, or appointed to more terms than what we historically have done. Just to give you a little background on the contractual relationship with APHS and some of those insights into what's required, what has been common practice, or what's required versus what's been common practice.
Okay, so we have a motion with regard to Chris Rampelmeyer. Any discussion, questions, concerns? We kind of motioned and discussed at the same time, but all those in favor of that motion...
Mayor, if I may, I don't know that we got a second.
Yeah, I did. Oh, I think for you to second it, I'm sorry, yes. Always stop me on that, though, Steph. Okay, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay, now we still have one more appointment, so.
We do.
I can't see Ms. Victoria, but I didn't know if she had a recommendation.
Yeah, Victoria?
Yes, when we had reached out to the Panhandle, the Humane Society, they had, they're currently saying that their board is very thin. They didn't, we didn't hear back from Chris, but we wanted to recommend him, assuming that he'll accept it. And then we had some attendance issues with their other recommendation. So it would be up to the board, the staff and myself, after reviewing everything, would like to recommend David Sanchez. David Sanchez is not only an educator, but he also is on the board of the NAACP.
You mean David Martinez?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's who I was asking...
Charlie Sanchez, David Martinez.
That's who I was asking about earlier. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's who I wanted to submit earlier, so I appreciate that.
Just anything there, Mr. Smith.
And of course, they're speaking towards them. They do have, by ordinance, the ability to recommend, but it's just a recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Victoria. I appreciate that. Mayor, I move to appoint David Martinez for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint David Martinez. Any discussions, questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote. Stephanie?
Okay, our next board for consideration is the Beautification and Public Arts Advisory Board. This is a nine-member board that serves three-year terms, and we have three positions up for appointment this year.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Stephanie Wong for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Stephanie. Any discussion or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote.
I move to appoint Lauren Hall for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Lauren Hall.
Yeah, I like that. Other than, I really didn't want her to go into Denise's unexpired term. I'd really rather see Lauren have a full term.
Mm-hmm, okay. Was that your comment, Sherman? Okay, excellent. We're working at peak efficiency here. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Lauren Hall. Any other discussion?
So Lauren and her husband, Andrew, are the ones that have done WHODO Mural Festival. And that, she, she really ought to be on this committee.
Yeah, it'll benefit a lot.
It will benefit a lot.
That's a great appointment. I'm glad she applied for it.
If I can make one comment, well, I'll let y'all finish that.
Okay, so...
Vote first, sorry.
Okay, with regard to Lauren, Lauren's motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Stephanie?
On this third motion, just a point of order, this is for an unexpiring term, and so it would be effective immediately and going through 1231 of 22. So my apologies, I have that wrong on your motion sheet.
Okay.
I'd like to move to appoint Matt Morgan to the unfilled term of Denise Chestnut.
I'll second that, yeah. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on Matt Morgan. Any discussion or questions about it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay, next is the Board of Review for Landmarks, Historic Districts, and Downtown Design. I would direct you to your attendance notes on this one. We have a couple of members here who had some attendance challenges. And then on this board, it's a seven-member board with one alternate. If you choose to, I know that the department liaison has requested that Greg Bliss, serving as an alternate, be moved into a full role if that opportunity is there.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Cindy Bulla for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Cindy Bulla. Any questions, dialogue about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Gary Jennings for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Gary Jennings to another term. Any discussion or dialogue questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Greg Bliss for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Greg Bliss into a full voting position on a three-year term. Any discussion or questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Wesley Knapp for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Wes Knapp to another term. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with the 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Jonathan Morris for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jonathan Morris to another term. Any questions?
Mayor.
Chris has got a comment here.
Sorry. We recommended that Greg Bliss be moved into Jonathan Morris's spot. There was a bit of an attendance issue with Jonathan Morris in his past term, so that was staff's recommendation for Greg Bliss.
I have somehow absorbed my attendance sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked, so...
So I nominated her for, for item three.
Correct.
Would that work or not?
Yes, as far as, we basically have, Jason Boyett has chosen not to serve again.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's one spot. We will need an alternate to replace Greg Bliss. And also, Jonathan Morris's position will need to be replaced, but we recommended that moving Greg Bliss up into that spot. But basically, there's two positions to fill, and Ann Thomas as well, so.
So how many meetings?
So we need somebody for Jonathan Morris's spot.
Correct.
Right.
And Ann Thomas as well.
Okay, so...
Ann Thomas as well. Yes, attendance issues with...
Yeah, so I...
With both of those.
So I moved Greg Bliss into number three. I don't know if you got the same sheet that I had.
I don't have it in front of me.
Which would be Ann Thomas. That's where I, that's where I had Mr. Bliss.
Oh, okay, now I get you. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Jonathan Morris will need to...
Right, okay.
And then...
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris, for those comments.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So let's go back down to number five then on our tracking sheet.
Right.
That we're looking for a place, someone to replace Jonathan Morris.
I move to nominate Thomas Warren III to replace Jonathan Morris for the three-year term beginning January 1.
I'll second that. Any discussion, comments? Chris?
I'd like to also state that that particular board has certain criteria for members, and so we'd have to pay attention to those criteria. And I believe I provided that, those comments for that particular board. So architect, owns property in the downtown area.
Thank you for reminding us of that.
I don't know if Mr. Warren does meet that criteria or not, but I don't.
Okay, all right, we need to back up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So who does meet that criteria?
Okay, so we've got, I don't know, I don't see any on the list. Okay, so I would like to, if we could appoint Delvin Salvage, would he meet that criteria or not?
I don't believe so. So there's, there's plenty of applicants on this, however... Uh, so there's, there's plenty of applicant, applicants on this, however, based on the criteria, it's probably not going to meet.
In the banking industry.
In the banking industry. We have a rep as well, but yeah, Wes Knapp. It's one of, right.
And the fund begins.
Do what?
And the fund begins.
You don't think T3 owns any property in downtown?
So what about, uh, what about Michelle Parsons?
I mean, is Michelle Parsons?
She's 23. Sorry, Frida.
Okay, so Michelle Parsons is on our list as well. And then also Stephanie Daggett, is that how you, is that how you?
Chris, could you tell us who meets the criteria there on the right-hand side?
I'm looking at, uh, Michelle Parsons' resume right now. Uh, she's a sales rep at Panhandle Presort. Uh, I don't believe she would meet one of those criteria.
He actually doesn't own a business. T2 does, but T3 doesn't.
Okay, so the other person would be?
Stephanie Daggett's on the list.
Okay.
Right.
So.
So Devon Savage would be one that wouldn't meet that.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking when I looked at his resume.
Yes.
So, uh, Mayor, I move to appoint Delvin Savage. I think, I think that he would be a good appointment to this particular board, um, for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022, 2022.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for Devon Savage. Any further conversation or discussions about that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and he's going into the spot for Jonathan Morris?
That is correct.
Correct.
Uh-huh. Okay, now we're down to number six, so now I need some guidance here.
And if I can add, you also would have one more motion to make for an alternate since we moved Greg up.
So do, does anybody else qualify?
So did Stephanie Daggett, did she meet the qualifications?
She didn't specify a profession on her resume. She's Vice President of the Route 66 Historical Association. I don't know that that would qualify her.
Historic prevent, uh, preservationist, I think is pretty close to what we're, uh, or some of the criteria, so I would, I would say that was.
Maybe she could fit in that category.
An alternate or a full-time voting position. I would say that would be acceptable.
Okay. Mayor, I move to appoint, uh, Stephanie Daggett as an alternate, uh, for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Stephanie as the alternate on this board. Any discussion, questions about that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes with a five oh vote. So we still need to fill a position under number six.
Mayor, I.
No, I think we're good.
No, I think we still have one open, do we?
We do have one more.
Okay, so I have, I have Cindy Bulla, Gary Jennings, Greg Bliss, uh, did we, did we do Wesley Knapp?
Wes Knapp, yeah, we did.
And Devon Savage and Stephanie Daggett. So I think that's.
I think we moved Stephanie into the.
She's, she's an alternate.
She's an alternate.
Which leaves us, number six is still, the alternate place is not on here. Is that right?
That's correct, because you moved Mr. Bliss up, there's an extra motion there. So number six is to appoint.
My apologies, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to nominate Mike Ritter to the sixth open appointment for a three-year term. He's an architect here in town for Playa Designs.
Okay.
Chris is shaking his head.
Second.
Councilmember Stanley, would you spell his name for me?
Mike Ritter, R-I-T-T-E-R, I believe.
Thank you. And is he in our stack, Cole?
He's not, I'll have to reach out to him. I haven't spoken with him.
Okay.
Second.
It's a blind, it's a blind date, yeah, there we go, okay. So we have a motion to appoint Mike Ritter, it's been seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a five oh vote.
Okay, and, and that is a three-year term, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. Okay, thank you for working through that one, a little more, anytime I've got an alternate, that's a little confusing.
And I appreciate you bringing that to my attention, because I thought I had it covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could be a really good one.
Okay, Steph?
Okay, our next one is Canadian River Municipal Water Authority. The city appoints two members to serve on this board, and one is up for reappointment this year, and I'm going to try to say his name right, Roy.
Euretia.
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 And, uh, staff recommends that Mr. Euretia be reappointed.
Okay, so Mayor, I move to reappoint Roy Euretia for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Roy. Any comments, questions?
He's a great guy.
He's a great guy.
Perfect person.
All those in favor of Roy, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a five oh vote. Stephanie?
Okay, our next board is the Center City Tiers Number One Board of Directors. Um, just to fix an error on here, they are a two-year term board, not three years. We have two appointments that are Amarillo that are up for reappointment this year, Joseph Peterson and Ava Kinsey.
Okay, is Joseph willing to serve again? Because I saw somewhere that.
He is, I spoke to him about it.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Joseph Peterson for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Joseph for another term. Questions, concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Okay, I do not have a recommendation for the second position.
I was going to recommend Jeff Perkins.
Yeah.
But we may feel like that we already, I remember putting him somewhere. Where did we put him?
Yeah, he's on Planning His Own.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Do you know Dayton, uh, Vee Tipton?
Anyone? No Dayton? Andrew?
If you want a staff recommendation, Gary would be a, a good one. He's gone through the process of getting incentives through Tiers One. He comes to the meetings as a bystander to, to watch him, so he's very involved in downtown.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, I move to appoint, uh, Gary Jennings for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Gary. Um, any questions, comments about that? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a five oh vote.
Okay, Mayor, our next board is the Construction Advisory and Appeals Commission. This is another one with some special requirements, so for your current members, you'll see on your list what role they're, they are filling. We've got a total of five appointments needed for this one.
Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Jim Barnes for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reappoint Jim Baines. Is that Barnes?
Thank you.
Not sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, any comments, questions about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint George Cummings for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been nominated, uh, it's been moved and seconded to appoint George Cummings. Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
May I move to reappoint Ryan Huseman for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022?
Second.
It's been, uh, moved and seconded that we appoint Ryan to another term. Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Tom Roller for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved to appoint Tom Roller, any, and seconded, anybody have questions or concerns? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Cecil Price for a three-year term beginning January 1. He's a roofer here in town, resident.
I'll second that.
Not on your list.
I'll second it.
Cole, what, let's see, let me, where you put him in at?
This would be to replace Joel Favella, who's an HVAC.
So he'd be a subcontractor technically? So I think a roofer would, would work there.
So you need an HVAC person, or what?
I believe so. Do we have Johnny in the room?
Has to be a roof, a registered.
Oh, has to be a mechanic?
Does, yeah. It has to be a registered professional engineer.
So.
For, for the HVAC category. Right?
On the fourth line of those special requirements, Mayor, you need a heating and air conditioning contractor. That would be your HVAC one.
Okay, sorry, I was reading up there.
We do have Gary Ward on here, is there any concern?
So Gary's the only candidate qualified to replace that spot?
Looks like it.
That's what it looks like to me. Okay, uh, Mayor, I move to appoint Gary Ward for a three-year term beginning January
I think we're going to let it die because he wasn't qualified, so that motion is second on Cecil. Not qualified, so going to let that die. Coming back to, we now have a motion and a second for Gary Ward to replace Joel.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Um, any comments or questions about that? Okay, we need to figure out a way to, um, get Cecil in there, that'd be great.
It would be.
Okay, all of those in favor of Gary, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with the five oh vote.
Okay, Mayor, our next commission is the Condemnation Appeals Commission, and this is kind of a sub-commission of the Construction Advisory, so members on this one must be members of the Construction Advisory and Appeals Commission. It's five members plus one alternate. Um, the alternate is up for reappointment, um, and so this is another one where if you chose to move that alternate into a full-time voting position, then we would need a motion for a new alternate.
Okay. Let's start with that.
Okay. So do we know if that's what the board wants or the staff wants, or?
Justin Opel will come up and.
Thank you.
Hi, Justin.
Good afternoon, Council, or evening, I guess I should say. Uh, George Cummings is willing to be an alternate again with this board.
Thank you.
And we are also recommending Ryan Huseman, who was, um, on the Construction Advisory Appeals Commission as well, who y'all just approved again, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mayor, I move to reappoint Jim Baines for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Jim. Any concerns or questions? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint George Cummings as an alternate for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint George Cummings as an alternate. Any concerns or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Tom Roller for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Tom Roller. Any questions, concerns about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Ryan Huseman for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to appoint Ryan. Um, any discussion about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Mayor, if I may take us back to Center City Tiers Number One, um, you made the motions to appoint. We also need Council to appoint a chair for that committee.
Okay.
This is, this is.
Dean Frigo's the current chair, and he'd be willing to continue serving.
Ah, got it. Okay, we've got a motion on that then?
Uh, yes, we do, as soon as I can find it.
Yeah, it's on page nine.
There's not a motion on your motion sheet, we would just be looking for a motion to appoint.
Page nine of your packet, page five of your motion framework.
Yeah, five is what I was looking for, that's, I was just looking for the board, actually.
Okay.
Okay, so Mayor, I move to appoint Dean Frigo as the chairperson for the City City, for the Center City Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Zone Number One Board of Directors, is that right?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, um, appoint Dean to continue as chairman of that Tiers Number One Board. Questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Andrew, for catching that.
Thank you. Now to page six of your motion list and page 11 of your workbook, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. 11 members serve on this board with three-year terms. You have three appointments coming up this year, one at large, one, and, and two hotel. One of the hotels is a vacancy currently.
Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Angela Knapp for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022 as the at-large, uh, member.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Angela Knapp. Any discussion about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five oh vote.
Uh, Mayor, I move to reappoint, uh.
Pyle.
Pyle, thank you.
Nahthu, yeah.
I'm going, I'm going to play the mayor now for, for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Pyle Nahthu for another term. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes with a five oh vote.
Uh, Mayor, I move to appoint, uh, Al Patel to fill a hotelier seat for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Al Patel to serve, um, on the CVB. Any questions, comments?
Um, this was the only application that was received for that position, just.
For the hotelier seat.
Yes, just so you know.[1683.41]
Correct. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That passes with a five-o vote. I'm gonna pause this just for a second. Does anybody need to take a bathroom break?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's take a five-minute break, come right back. We're doing pretty good. It's this fallback timeframe that's messing with us. I keep looking at my watch, I'm like, oh, it's only six o'clock.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
Okay, we're rolling. We're waiting on Steph? Let's go ahead and the next one is a council committee, so let's go ahead and talk to that one while we're waiting on Stephanie to come back.
Mayor, I would like to appoint Councilmember Powell to fill the vacancy for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022 for the Audit Committee.
You're saying you're volunteering to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that's pretty stiff duty, yes.
I would've nominated you.
Okay.
So I'll second you.
Second that, okay.
Hey, I'm, I'm moving, I'm getting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you are, okay. So any opposition or problems, concerns with Frida serving in that open spot vacated by Councilmember Hayes?
All I'm gonna tell you is you better wear your waders.
May I?
That's a deep, deep pool.
May I add something? And it's not on here, and I just realized it in talking with Laura today. Back in June, we appointed Frida to that spot.
Oh, we did.
So we just need a reappointment. So you're, you've already got your waders on, I think, but.
So I didn't even get to.
But it's about time to use them.
Yeah, I didn't even get to use my waders at the beginning of the year.
Uh-huh, once-a-year thing. Okay, great.
Okay, well, I'm double-covered.
So let's vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that goes for a five-o vote.
Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Jared Miller to a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
What's our alternative? Second.
Okay, all of those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a five-o vote. Eddie, are you willing to serve again?
Yeah, I like this one.
Okay, I'll make the motion for Eddie to serve another appointment.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor.
I'm not as bold as Frida.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I move to reappoint Laura Street.
Okay. Go to second.
Second.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to step on that. It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Laura Street. Anyone questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Laura Stors to fill the ACM vacancy for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022. That is Assistant City Manager.
Second.
Okay. Any conversation about that? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes with a five-year, a five-year vote. A five-o vote.
Yeah, I'll just say that, that I wouldn't serve unless Laura's serving.
Yeah. Very important member of that committee.
Mayor and Council, one thing to note on this item. Back when we had a resolution in 2016 establishing this, the language was a little different. And so at our next meeting, we anticipate bringing a resolution forward to change that appointment to, say, Chief Financial Officer going forward.
That would make more sense, yeah.
Uh-huh. Okay. Uh-huh, okay.
And with that, we are to the East Gateway, Tiers Number Two. This is a ten-member board with two-year terms. We have one Amarillo appointment up for consideration, and we also need a chair consideration or chair motion for this one.
Okay. Mayor, I move to reappoint John Atterbury for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint John as, to reappoint John. Any discussion about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote.
The previous chair was Mercy Murgia, who's no longer on the board. The only feedback we received was that Dean Frigo did not want to serve as chair. He's currently vice chair, and he's also chair of Tiers One. If I could narrow it down for you, it'd probably be either John Atterbury or Chris Sharp, based on attendance and participation with the executive committee, focused on the projects they've been working on, just for their historical background.
So, Mayor, I move to appoint John Atterbury as the chairperson for the East Gateway Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board of Directors.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for John to serve as chairman. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes with a five-o vote.
Okay, the next board in your packet is the Environmental Task Force. I will refer you to your attendance sheet on this one. There is an attendance challenge there. All those staff recommends that this member be reappointed. This is a seven-member task force with one-year appointments. So all seven are up for appointment.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Tim Dillon for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Tim. Any concerns, questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Roger Glow for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Roger. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint David Moody for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint David to another term. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I may, I move to reappoint Councilmember Howard Smith for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Howard, you willing to serve? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Adam Shear for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Anyone have comments? Okay, all those in favor of Adam serving another term, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with five-o.
How about Dan Ferguson?
I think Dan would be an excellent appointment.
Okay, Mayor, I move to appoint Dan Ferguson for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Dan Ferguson. Any comments on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five-o.
And then, Mayor, I move to appoint Christopher Potzimini as an ex officio for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Mayor, per Tim, this is actually a staff ex officio. And so the recommendation would be Donnie Hooper as the liaison.
Well, but of course.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, okay, let me, Mayor, if I could amend my motion, please.
Yes, you may.
I move to appoint Mr. Donnie Hooper as an ex officio for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Donnie Hooper. Any other thoughts? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes five-o.
I see that now, Ms. Stephanie, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Your next board is the First Responders Excellence and Innovation Fund. This is a seven-member board with one-year terms. There are some special requirements here. So it consists of two city council members, the city manager, the chief of police, the fire chief, and then two positions at large. And I, I will note on here, Melin Huntley is, is thankful she served and happy to help transition, but has asked not to serve another term.
Okay. All right, Mayor, I move to reappoint Brian Fleming for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Brian, and any comments on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it passes five-o.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Jared Miller for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Jared to serve as another term. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five-o.
Mayor Nelson, are you willing to continue to serve?
I'm willing.
I move to reappoint Mayor Ginger Nelson for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Aye. Oh, second, I'm sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five-o.
I second that, aye.
And Councilmember Smith, are you willing to serve again?
I will.
Okay. I move to reappoint Councilmember Howard Smith for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Chief Martin Birkenfeld to fill the police chief's seat for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Chief Jason Mays to fill the fire chief's seat for a one-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We're down to the vacancy.
Yeah, we're down.
Mayor, I move to appoint Tim Williams to an at-large seat for a one-year term beginning on January 1. He's not on your list. Tim was a former APOA president, retired police officer here. Still mentors Toby Hudson.
Second.
Okay. All those, the favor, I'm sorry, the motion for Tim has been seconded, so any discussion on that? Tim Williams?
Tim Williams.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you for that suggestion.
Okay, next up is our Library Advisory Board. We need two appointments for this board. One of those is a vacancy. It's a five-member board with three-year terms. This is one where we gave you your packets two weeks ago. We didn't have many applicants for it. Amanda reached out and has some extras to add. So we have Olga McAllister.
And Lill.
And Lill Withrow. And then we also received, and this one was just a citizen that reached out, Melinda Grady. And so those are names to add in your consideration on these two.
Okay, so, Mayor, I move to appoint Olga McAllister for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022. Okay, let me back up for just a moment before we do that. So Monica Hart has, she, she's on our attendance list, but.
She is on your attendance list. Now, staff has said that she's a professor at WT, and some of her attendance has been related to that, and that she has been a good advocate for the board, and so they would recommend reappointing her if you so choose to.
I'm gonna amend my motion then. Mayor, I move to reappoint Monica Hart for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Monica Hart. Any conversation about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote.
And then, Mayor, I move to appoint Lill Withrow for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
I'll second that. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Lill to a term to the Library Advisory Board. Any discussion about that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes with a five-o vote.
Next on your list is our Traffic Advisory Board. This is a seven-member board with two-year terms. There are two positions up for appointment. They are both willing to serve again, and staff recommends appointment.
Okay. Can you guys talk to us just about, I mean, again, are there special needs? Yeah, Donnie.
And Adam was just put on there like two years ago, so that number's gotta be wrong.
I wondered about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, this is a lot like what we talked about. There's a lot of institutional knowledge on this board. They make a lot of decisions that have to do with the Uniform Manual Traffic Control, with having knowledge of traffic laws and things like that. So having a consistent board has benefited us in streamlining our meetings, and that's why we made the recommendation that we did. They don't really meet a lot. I mean, this year, we only met four times, partly for special things that come our way. But again, that institutional knowledge is, is very valuable.
Okay.
Let's say the, on the, on the other person that's an applicant here, he's also reached out to request to be considered for ZBOA. So it might work out.
Okay, so.
One other note, too, I forgot to mention, too, on Steve Rogers. He's also, our pedestrian bicycle board requires that the chair of this board serve there, and he is serving as that member on pedestrian bicycle.
Okay. Thank you, Donnie. Mayor, I move to reappoint Steve Rogers for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Okay, been moved and seconded to reappoint Steve Rogers. Any conversation about that? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes five-o.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Adam Shear for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, any conversation about that? All those in favor of Adam's reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five-o.
Mayor, our next board is the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee. This is a seven-member board with three-year terms. We've got one vacancy to fill, and then we have Teri Gungrick, whose term is ending. She is willing to serve again. There is an attendance note on this one, but staff, it's a little bit under the, the percentage and staff would recommend that she continue to serve in that role.
Okay. Mayor, I move to reappoint Teri Ginrich for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Teri. Donnie, how do you say her last name? Okay, I won't put you on the spot, sorry. Okay. Go in. Teri G. Okay, there, that's what we needed, was just a strategy for it. All right, all of those in favor of Teri G to serve another term, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a five-o vote.
Okay, so I have a question before I make the next appointment. So does Mr. Ramirez, does he want to be on the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee or the zoning?
He prefers ZBOA, but he did apply for, for Traffic Advisory, Pedestrian Bicycle Safety, and then has since called to request also be considered for ZBOA. So I would say use him wherever you think you can best use him. His preference was ZBOA, though.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Okay, I, I do not know Steph Atkinson or Earl Say, is it Say, Saylaw, Say, Saytop?
I understand it's another motion.
Okay, is that a motion?
Okay, I would second that, because Chris would be a good fit for, for this particular committee.
Okay. Good job.
I could comment on that, but I'm not.
Good job, Mrs. Councilmember. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to nominate Chris Potzimini to this Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Advisory Committee. If you couldn't hear, because Councilmember Smith's microphone was not on, that's, that's what the motion was. It was seconded. Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a five-o vote. And I have one question. We had, I'm gonna move backwards to the Traffic Advisory Board. We had a an attendance issue for someone whose term was not up. Do we need to make an, an appointment for Mr. Everhart?
No.
No?
No, he does not want to serve again, according to the notes.
Even though his term is not up?
Let me, let me, let me make sure that I read this correctly.
The note that we put on that is we've tried to make contact and, and have not received any contact back, so. But there was a zero percent attendance.
Right, that's what I understood.
Yeah, so I think, I had, I had made a note there that we needed to have that discussion. Yeah, so I think, I had, I had made a note there that we needed to have that discussion. I'm sorry that I let that go by.
And realizing, too, you know, he's out at PANTC, so that may be.
Yes, his job is not superfluous.
It's difficult to reach, yeah. And we did have another one that had a 0% as well, but that was all due to COVID. There was a lot of issues with being able to log onto a computer, you know, just some different things, challenges there, but I think we've overcome now, so.
Yeah, good, okay. So can we revisit and let's, so that makes that a partial term, which would be just a one-year fill-in. Do we have somebody still thinking that Rodney would be a good fit on the zoning board? So.
I think that was his preference, but I understand, but I hear what you're saying, too.
Put him on both.
It's just the one-year term. Is, was there somebody else that y'all saw on our main list that you?
So Mayor, I'm a little bit lost. Where are we?
Okay, so now we're going back up to Traffic Advisory Board, and it's.
So we have Steve Rogers and Adam Scher, right?
So Alonso is not in red, but I think it would, we would be well-served to go ahead and replace someone for the rest of his term.
So on page 16 of your packet.
Thank you, Steph.
Councilmember Pal Alonso Everhart, his term would end next December, December of 2022. And so if you made a motion, we would motion to have someone fill that remaining term.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
They meet how many times a year?
Traffic advisory, how many times a year do they meet?
Well, we've only met four times this year, and it's just as fun as anybody's.
Uh-huh, okay. What about Thomas Warren III?
Oh, that's a good one.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I move to appoint Thomas Warren III.
To fill?
To fill that one year of Alonso Everhart. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, got it, great. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. Does that help you, Donnie?
Yes.
Okay, great. Y'all don't hesitate to mention those if we're overlooking any attendance issues.
I appreciate that because I overlooked that. I remember reading that, but I overlooked it as well.
Okay, all right, back to Panhandle Centers.
Yes.
Texas Panhandle Centers. The city appoints one position onto this board. Patty Lad is up for reappointment. This is a two-year term. And I don't know if Ms. Lad is willing to serve again or not. We don't have confirmation on that. I will note, she has been serving since 2003.
I noticed that.
This is a special board.
And I don't know either one of these individuals. Do we have a recommendation from staff?
I don't know that we have a board liaison for this particular board. We appoint them and they serve on that board for the Texas Panhandle Centers.
Can we hold off on this one?
Absolutely.
And you reach out directly to Texas Panhandle Centers, just see if they have a recommendation, because we don't even know what attendance has been.
Yes, I'll make a note and we can bring this to a future meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Stephanie.
In that case, we are to zoning board of adjustments.
Now, do we, do we need to, do we need to vote on that if we're going to?
Oh.
If we're going to?
Would you make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Brian shaking his head no.
You don't have to take any action on it either. It's up to you.
Yeah? Okay.
If you don't have a vote, then you don't have an appointment, so.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just let it go, then. We'll come back on a different agenda. Okay. All right, Stephanie.
Zoning Board of Adjustment. This is a five-member board with up to four alternates that council may appoint. They serve two-year terms. A couple of notes on this one. There are some attendance challenges, so if you'll refer back to your attendance information. Rodney Ramirez, as we discussed earlier, would like to be considered for this board, so if you'll please add his name to your applicants. And then on one of the applicants, Dayton Fee Tipton, he indicated a conflict with the time commitment. He said if he served, he would request these meetings be no longer than an hour, and in talking with Justin Opel, they many times go beyond.
Okay. So Mayor, I move to reappoint Claudia Stewart for a two-year term.
Second.
Beginning on January 1, 2022.
Okay. Any conversation on Claudia's motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to appoint Rodney Ramirez as an alternative for a two-year term beginning on January 1, 2022.
Okay. That motion's been seconded. Any conversation about Rodney's appointment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Rodney passes with a 5-0 vote.
So the last two are optional, and I don't have other candidates.
Mayor, I would move to appoint Dick Ford as an alternate seat for the two-year term, since he's no longer serving on your P&amp;Z board.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Dick Ford to zoning board of adjustment. Do we have any discussion on that? Any other names you want to bring forward? Who is Dayton? Do we know anything about Dayton?
Looks like a, looks like a young person that is very interested in getting involved in city stuff. He is a, he handles the MLS for the Realtors Association.
Do you know him, Howard?
But it's almost a quote on his thing. He's really interested in becoming involved in city, in the city.
But none of us know him?
Correct.
And I'll note Jason Burr is on here as an applicant with a staff recommendation as well.
Oh, yeah, okay. Jason would do a great job.
Great guy.
Okay, well, we've got a motion on the table with regard to Mr. Ford, so let's go ahead and put that up for a vote. All of those in favor of Dick coming on to serve on the zoning board of adjustment, say aye. Maybe we better do this by raise of hands. Let's raise your hands if you're in favor of that. Okay, two, if you're opposed. Three. So let's make another motion then with regard to somebody that would be willing to serve on that board.
Okay, Mayor, I move to appoint Jason Burr to fill an alternate seat for a two-year, two-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jason to this board. Any discussion or conversation about it? All those in favor of Jason, let's raise hands. Those opposed? Okay, that passes with a 4-1 vote. And then, do we have one more?
We do have one more seat. It's optional. And one thing I should note with this board, there are five members, but it requires four for a quorum, which is why we have alternates. So if council chose, they could leave that last alternate spot vacant.
Okay, well, because I don't have any, I don't have any additional candidates.
You know, I'm kind of inclined to appoint Dayton as an alternate. Let's see what his attendance is. Let's get to know him. He wants to be involved. Okay, so I would make the motion to appoint Dayton Fee Tipton.
Okay, I second.
Any conversation about that? Concerns? Okay, all of those in favor, let's do hands. Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote. That gives him a chance to get involved. Okay, Stephanie?
Okay, Council, we are in your home stretch. We are down to our public improvement districts. We've got Kelly Shaw in the room, in case you have any questions. These are a little more specific. They require certain, either developer, homeowner, or owner recommendations. And typically, for the developer and the owner ones, those come from those and you just appoint their recommendations. So we'll start with Colonies Public Improvement District. We need five appointments on this one. We've got two currently, Jason Burr and Tracy Byers, who are willing to serve again. And for the vacancies, we have some applicants listed with their designation, if you will.
Okay, and. Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Jason Burr for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Jason, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Tracy Byers for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor of Tracy, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and I'm, we're going to move through these PIDs a lot more quickly. I mean, the pool of people to apply is much more narrow, so if you have a comment or something, I need you just to jump in, because I'm just going to move straight to calling for a vote.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Mayor, I move to appoint Clark Damian for the developer.
Second.
All those in favor of Clark, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to appoint Allison Flaming as a developer. Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me back up. Let me go down to Josh Langham as a homeowner.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Josh, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0.
Okay, and then I move to appoint Allison, Allison Flaming, F-L-A-M-I-N-G, as a developer owner.
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor of Allison, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0.
Next is your Heritage Hills Public Improvement District. There are five appointments here, four are reappointments and willing to serve again, and one vacancy for a homeowner.
Okay, Mayor, I re, I move to reappoint James Bentley for a three-year term.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of James, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Erin Johnson.
Second.
All those in favor of Erin, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Perry Williams.
Second.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, sorry about that. A motion. Do we have a second on Perry?
We do.
We do? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Perry, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Seth Williams.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Seth, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay, and so as far as the homeowner, I don't know.
There's a Kevin Persons that's listed on there.
Mayor, I move to appoint Kevin Persons to fill the homeowner seat.
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor of Kevin, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes with a 5-0 vote.
Next, we have the Pinnacle Public Improvement District. This is a three-member board, and their term length is one year. All three are up and are willing to serve again.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Wendell Davies.
Second.
All those in favor of Wendell, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor, I move to reappoint Mark Franklin.
Second.
All those in favor of Mark, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0.
And Mayor, I move to reappoint Cleve Turner.
Second.
All those in favor of Cleve, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0.
Next is the Point West Public Improvement District. Four positions are up for appointment, three-year length. And one note on this one, on your appointments, we have Michael Gonzalez as one of the owner recommendations. This is from Atmos Energy, and they have asked to replace him with Nathan Morrow, who is an account manager for them.
Excellent choice.
So if you'll just make that note when making your motions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I move to reappoint Amanda Allen.
Second.
All those in favor of Amanda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to reappoint, is it Al Kesh Patel?
Is that different than Alpesh Patel?
Yes, I think it is.
It's different, okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Al Kesh, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to appoint Michael Gonzalez to fill a homeowner seat.
Second. All of those in favor of?
Isn't this the one that they were saying that they're going to put somebody in place?
They requested Nathan Morrow.
Oh, not Michael, sorry.
Not Michael Gonzalez.
That's right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Not Michael. So nominate not Michael.
Okay. Say that, say that again.
Nathan.
Nathan Morrow, M-O-R-R-O-W.
Okay, Nathan, N-A.
He'll do a good job.
Morrow, M-A-R-R-O-W. Okay. Mayor, I move to appoint Nathan Morrow to a homeowner seat, and I'm amending my motion.
Second.
Yes, thank you. All those in favor of Nathan, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to appoint Kevin Carter to fill a homeowner seat for a three-year term.
Second.
All those in favor of Kevin, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Okay.
Next, we have Quell Creek. This is a three-member board with three-year terms. Please note Jim Luganville was previously an applicant. He has asked to have his name removed. So we will have one motion for you today. We may have to bring this one back at a future meeting for that second position.
Okay. Mayor, I move to appoint Trina Santi to fill a homeowner seat for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor of Trina, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0. No one knows off the top of their head a resident of that that wouldn't be willing to serve, right?
No, this was the only resident I know.
Let's come back to it, then.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Town Square Public Improvement District. This is a five-member board, serving three years. All five members are up for reappointment, and all are willing to serve again and recommended by their applicable areas.
Let's do them as a slate.
Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Kevin Golden, Tiffany Hooker, Chris Reinhardt, Noah Williams, and Seth Williams.
Second.
All those in favor of the slate, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That slate passes 5-0.
And your last, no, I'm sorry, next to last, Public Improvement District is Tutbury. This is a three-member board with three-year terms. All are up for appointment. The two that are up for reappointment are willing to serve again, and there is an applicant there recommended for the vacancy.
Okay. Mayor, I move to reappoint Catherine Cliff and Cheryl Orman for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022. And then I'll do the other one.
Second.
All those in favor of the reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to appoint Richard Drake to fill a homeowner seat for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor of Richard, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Do we need to catch Cheryl?
Yeah, we need a motion for Cheryl for number two on that list.
I did.
She was in that motion. She was, yeah.
It's been a long meeting.
I know, it is.
It has been.
Yeah, I switched it up on you.
I know, sorry. Thank you.
No, you're good.
Thanks for double checking. They don't always want us to double check. Appreciate that.
So now, I'm not lying when I say the last board on here is the Vineyards Public Improvement District, excuse me. It's a five-member board with three-year terms. All five are up for reappointment. Are, all five are willing to serve again and recommended as such.
Okay, Mayor, I move to reappoint Jason Henry, Kent Meyer, Thomas Nielsen, Tom Nielsen Jr., and Larry Teague to a three-year term beginning January 1, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor of the slate, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, slate passes 5-0. Congratulations, Councilmember Stanley. You have now gone through your first.
One and done.
One, one and now done.
Uh-uh, we're never done.
Okay, so I think that brings us to the end of our non-consent agenda. We've got one thing left on our agenda, and that is an executive session item.
And Mayor, before you do that, I don't know how much work Stephanie has put into this.
Yes.
But, I mean, she has just done an awesome job with the organization piece of it, and you know how I like organization.
Yes, I do.
So I don't take that very lightly. So I think that she's done an awesome job.
To get my packet and it looks like this?
Uh-huh.
That's golden.
I mean, I think the first year, we had two notebooks like this. It was, it was so much better. Every year, it gets better. Stephanie, thank you.
And I did, and I really liked this part, too.
Me, too.
So thank you. You did great.
Compared to some of the previous years that I've been through this. Play smoother. And I'd like to honor you in front of everyone that's here tonight. I'd like to honor you in front of everyone that's here tonight.
And I will say thanks for the kind words. Big thank you to Johnny.
Big thank you to Johnny.
Secretary, next time you see her, and to all the board liaisons, because I know I was emailing them constantly, asking some things, asking for interviews, you know. It was a big team effort.
It was. Thanks for your leadership on it, Stephanie.
Sorry, Mayor.
No, I'm glad we paused to say that. And I don't know, did anybody time us? Like, when did we start doing that? 4:30-ish?
It's not even nine o'clock yet.
Pretty quick. We did get there pretty quick.
Yeah, so maybe two, two and a half hours? That's, that's a record as well. Okay, Brian, are you up there? Are you awake? Okay, would you read our language, please?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session, the Admiral City Council was announced on November the 9th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Under the following authority, Section 551.087, discuss commercial financial information received from an existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for a location or retention of a facility, or for incentives the city is willing to extend financial information submitted by the same.
Thank you. We're adjourned to executive.